With the East is very important. The West is beginning to disappoint us if they have not disappointed us before. More than five billion dollars was stolen by Abacha, a former, one single leader from Nigeria. The five billion dollars ended up where? In Miss Switzerland. It has stolen this country, most of it. Before it went to France, Switzerland and where the United States. Out of this, Switzerland has returned roughly nine hundred million dollars. The UK has given, the US has given about three hundred million for us and even our own there, Donald Trump has promised very recently he would return more. This country has returned to Nigeria what?
Zero.
Zero! And over two billion of Nigeria's foreign schooling money is here. Doesn't matter, let us start thinking of strategies to reverse this, to make the West more loyal to us as we are loyal to them and I wish our presidential administration the best in all possible ways.
Back it!
Back!
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 Thank you very much, our speaker, and I believe he is very helpful. Before I introduce the next speaker, I would just like to say a few words myself and this is really, really important. On my phone, I have downloaded the Nigerian constitution. Now, I am imploring every single Nigerian to download this onto your phone. This should be your bible. This should be your Quran. You need to read the constitution to know your rights, to be able to claim it. That is the reason why I choose the name Citizen AY. It means that you are a citizen of that nation. You are going to claim your rights and you are going to know what your rights are.
Back it!
Back!
Back!
Take it!
Take it!
What we gonna do?
Take it back!
What we gonna do? That's right, we gonna take it back! And who's gonna need us?
Sure!
Who's gonna need us?
Sure!
Take it back!
Take it back!
So that's what I want to say about that. I want every single person when you live here, make sure you download on my page Citizen AY, I've got the constitution, download it, put it on your phone, read it, understand it. If you haven't got it, if you don't understand it, speak to your friends, talk about it. Let that be your bible. Forget the Quran, forget the Bible, this must be your bible. The next speaker I'm gonna bring on is Dr. Amoradele, I'm sorry.
I see you're so much my brain.
Right, Dr. Samson Amoradele. Now, he's gonna talk to us about a working health environment. So if I could please bring on Dr. Samson Amoradele. Right, sorry, let me define it. And I will be, for each speaker, we have five minutes. We're giving you five minutes because we're running slightly late. So please give it up. So he will be speaking in a few minutes. And in the meantime.
Solidarity forever! Solidarity forever! Solidarity forever! We shall always fight for rights!
Solidity, solidarity!
Solidarity forever! Solidarity forever! Solidarity forever! We shall always fight for rights!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Take it back!
London!
London!
Right. We've got a few speakers on this. Okay, whilst we're doing that. Okay, in the meantime, we're gonna bring the humanists. Where's humanist? Humanist, and he comes right down face. I'll shoot him a round of applause and now please, break him down. Five minutes, I'm hoping to discuss with you the project of Dr. Samson Amoradele.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
First, I want to thank my leader, Amoradele, and also my other leaders for giving us this opportunity today to really speak about the mindset of the youth. So I'm gonna talk about the mindset of the African youth. Because I came into this movement not just because, actually I fall into the platform of the civil and human. We need renewable energy. He's the leader that we want, that we need. He has the interest of the youth. And sometimes people will be saying, oh, I believe, somebody like me, they're not too young to run big. I back into that not because of age, I back into it because it's a tool for the youth. I buy into it because it's an opportunity for the youth to lead. You know, some of them say we are inconsequential, some say we are lazy, some say we are not ready, some say the youth are incompetent, but some say we are dreaming. I said, yes, we are dreaming, but this dream is a revolution. And we're coming with a revolution to redeem the people.
Yes!
That's how it's coming, and I just want us to support any young man that is coming up, be the voice of the people, because we all matters. It's not just one people, because they turn Africa and Nigeria into animal farm. Where the opinion of some matter, and there's a separate law for some people, while there's a separate law for others. But this youth that come out is to represent us, is this movement is a movement by us, for us, and we're gonna utilize it.
Yes, thank you, man!
That's why I want to end with this. I want to end with this, we're not gonna do the same thing. I'm living with this, we have to take it back, we have to make it better, because we deserve better.
Right, a round of applause for humanist speaker, a round of applause. Well said, well said, very well said. In the beginning, we think that specifically I'm gonna pass this flag to Dr. Samson Amoradele, and he's giving you all five minutes and just sum up some topical issues here.
Yes, thank you very much, because we are running out of time. I'm greatly eager to address the work in the healthcare environment. Nigerian system, Nigerian system that will be working well. We've been looking at this now for years for working in the healthcare environment against cancer, heartbreak, design, suspected post-trauma. The working healthcare environment, the benefit of the working healthcare environment, then I will add here. The keys are how are we to work in Nigeria. Our companies have not been performing, there is a demand that they not be working together for patients. People should come for whatever, whatever we're doing, we have to professionalize, for its needs, to equality of care, safety, effectiveness, and efficiency. Very important in Nigeria. The Jews are not with any of this. Respect and dignity, you probably like, everyone matters, everyone counts, to my resources for the benefits of work within the healthcare system. Then I have tried to design a pathway, in our existing system in Nigeria, we begin to design different pathways, where we will be able to refer patients, teaching us people, from teaching us people to love patient at moment, through to that, through to making decisions based on the treatment times and then go there moving to after treatment, before we move into the area of improvement. Then next slide, the working environment, we have a structure. Where we have, we need a nationalized service, healthcare differences, where we have different systems, where they don't be pulling data from. Then we have a strategic area, use a strategic area where it does not analyze and sort of phase, moving to the data base, then we receive chance clouds of attacks. Therefore, decisions to prepare, issue can include the American records, the conditions, then decision makers, then there are kinds of data for the healthcare. Then benefits, we gave it to recently, it sets the first of the body healthcare services. Usually identify new cases of diseases, identify the factors for terrorism. Then we identify and understand easily a person who at most at least have a particular disease and condition. Then we will be able to establish initialship, an association that we agree amongst the business, our various, for stratification, definition of processes, response to terrorism. So our company now, so we are expecting our new president to put love this man to, and he is ready, and we're ready to save back Nigeria.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, can you give him a round of applause again, please? Please, you have a happy day, best of performance, one more time, please. Thank you very much. The next speaker that we're gonna be having. Billy, Dr. Billy.
Ladi.
Sorry, Dr. Ladi Lawa, forgive me, sorry, I forgive you. And he will be talking about the health of Nigeria. Five minutes, five minutes. He will be talking on funding and training for medical professionals. Dr. Ladi Lawa, a round of applause. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, I hope people who are back home, I hope you've all told them to get their PVC. Without the PVC, we can't even get Soworek in. So what are we gonna do? Get your PVC, Operation Witi, Operation PVC. Tell your friends, your family, everybody you know. If we don't have that PVC in Nigeria, Soworek cannot get in. We need the PVC. And please, somehow, we're still struggling to find a way for the people who are in diaspora to be able to vote. We'll keep that struggle going on, we're walking behind the scenes and we're finding, keep trying to find a way. I just wanna say that. So we're still having some problems, so I'll keep on. So please, Nigerians, we need to all step up. This is not the time for us to be doing party, fancy, anything. Right now, the hard work begins now. Before we know it, February, will be on us, February 2019, we need to gather our forces together. We need to work together, get behind Soworek. Take it back!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Take it back!
Take it back! We gonna work!
We gonna take it back!
We gonna work! Okay, I'll pass the phone. Yes, thank you very much. Okay, you ready?
My name is. My name is Dr. Ladi Lawa, I'm a therapist by profession. And I would like to thank the call group for giving me this opportunity to have a talk on this important topic. So the topic is funding and medical training for medical professionals in Nigeria. So I'm gonna make it very brief, so I won't. Okay, now, if you look at this, that topic is very important to me. Why I decided to do this topic is I want to know the available allocation for the healthcare sector in Nigeria. And the reason for doing this small research is because I lost my brother in 2016, he's an asthmatic patient. So on his way to the hospital, he went to the one of the hospital in Nigeria, and he got there, when he got there, he couldn't make it anymore because they couldn't attend to him. So I asked one of the nurses that what is the main problem, he said they haven't got enough staff. So when I went to the hospital, in general hospital, one of the general hospitals in Lagos state there, I went there, there was no light, they haven't got enough staff. So I decided that, okay, let me just search, what is the allocation for the X sector in Nigeria? As you know, strike in Nigeria is now a common thing. And what people don't know is this, there must be a cogent reason why medical doctors are going on strike. It's better to prevent than looking for treatment all the time. That is why I did this small search. Now, if you look at the budget allocation for the healthcare sectors in Nigeria, in 2012, Nigerian budget allocation for X sector was 5.96%. And in 2016, Nigerian budget was 4.23%. And in 2017 was 4.16%. Look at what happened. This is the bill, the current government presented to the National Assembly for the X sector. Now, look at that, 3.9%. You can see there is no, is no kind of improvement in terms of the budget allocation to the X sector in Nigeria. Now, in 2001, Abuja Declaration, that was, that is now sixteen years ago. They, in 2001, they called it 2001 Abuja Declaration, the heads of states of African union countries, they met and they pledged that, okay, they are going to increase, they are going to make a allocation for AIDS, 15, 16%. As I'm talking to you today, this has never happened at all. Now, in 2014, if you look at it, only four countries had met the 50.7%. One of, these are the countries, the Gambia, the Malawi, Jordan and Ethiopia. As I'm talking to you, we have never met that target. Now, what are the possible impact of healthcare budget allocation? If the healthcare, if the allocation for the budget is not enough, these are the possible outbreaks or the consequences of insufficient budget allocation, like multiple measures, visa visa, or high mortality and child deaths. Now, this is medical tourism in Nigeria. This is how much they spent annually on a medical tourism annually. Thank you very much.
A round of applause to Dr. Ladi Lawa. Thank you very much. The next person we'd like to invite onto the floor is Dr. Elizabeth Back Williams, a school business manager. Would you like to come down, please, Dr. Elizabeth Back Williams?
Thank you very much. Please, I'm not a doctor. I'm not, I'm Mrs. Barilis. I'm the school business manager, and I'm just going to talk as a Nigerian with the dream of the kind of Nigeria that I want. I work in a school, and my job is to make sure that everything that is not teaching wrongs work. So I make sure that there's water, there's light, that the bins are emptied, the food is fit for standard, the teachers coming on time, and they do what they're supposed to do, that staff are recruited properly, follow procedure, and where overall they comply. That is my job in the school. That's gonna be your job if you are president, when you become president. When you become president, that will be your job, it's not easy.
No if.
And in Nigeria, the problem we have in Nigeria, we don't have planning. Our planning is servant. I mean, when they were running around here today setting the mic, I said, and then I thought, oh my God. We will be doing this, and it was my friend who invited me today, and I'm going to join the floor. Because I think I want to contribute the new bit that I can. We need to pay attention to the details. When we leave the details, we lose the whole picture. We need to start from the very bottom, get the basics right, let's get our planning right. And then, another big thing is going to be a change of the culture. Our culture is the killer. We have a servitude mentality. Good morning, sir, good morning, sir. No, don't good morning me, just do the job. Just do what you're paid to do. Let the teacher do the job of the teacher, let the senator, let them plan, let the kitchen staff do their kitchen work. And Mr. President, get the right people in positions. Don't put just the people you know because you know them, because they're going to do you bad things. Because one thing, as president, if you are a good president, you will never ever know lack for the rest of your life. You don't have to work, you don't have to put the money in suitcases. Yes, you don't have to do that. So, as the other speaker said, look far beyond the shore of Nigeria. Look at people you don't know, check their credentials, and the people who can be trusted. And then, hold yourself accountable. Have a call of people who will be able to call you and say, Mr. President, that you did yesterday was wrong. If you are not accountable, you cannot be a good ruler. And you cannot then call people to account. So please, tackle the servitude mentality, let's get our planning right, let's get our basics right, fill the round holes with round people. And not just a mishmash of people. It is a habit, and you got to use it.
Thank you very much. Round of applause for Dr. Billy. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I do believe the moment you have all been waiting for is close to hand. And before we do that, I just want to say, this young man that we are about to introduce to you has hit the ground running in Nigeria. He's been all over the south, in the north, he's been in Canada, I'm sorry, in US. He's been in Canada, and now, for the first time, live in the UK, I bring you Amoradele Soworek. Thank you, thank you. I've been staying in London, thank you so much for bringing the revolutionary movement, that has taken it back to the heart of London. This is an opportunity to introduce to you the real independence for Nigeria from 2019. I am thrilled to be here. Because we are doing this today, something happened yesterday. Our outgoing president, who had been in the UK, had to flee the UK. The truth is that.
The bomb is around.
The hurricane is around. We sent it around to him, we sent word to him yesterday. We sent word to him yesterday that he should attend this town hall meeting. So that he can come and learn how governance will be after he's kicked out of office next year. I also want to announce to you that next year's election, the presidential election, will be holding on February 16, 2019. That particular day is my birthday. You are giving for some gift for me. That is the day you give me something very big for the country of Nigeria. I have come here to look myself to the country of Nigeria to rescue it, not alone, but with the help of all of you. Somebody came here, the lady who spoke very eloquently about planning. We need to plan, it is true. So if you want to plan a country that is on ground zero, you have to elect a planner. I actually scored the geography and planning at the University of Lagos. And on the very serious note, Nigeria is about to receive the best of times. If only we can decide here and now to rescue the country. And for those of you who may not have registered to vote because you are not allowed to vote, I want to quickly announce to you that diaspora voting will be one of the first act in office. We will send you the right to vote. It is almost unquestionable that the biggest foreign investors into Nigeria, the Nigerians in the diaspora, are not allowed to vote in elections of their countries. Not only will I do that, it will be also a matter of priority that no Nigerian who is known as Nigerian, whether they have abandoned their citizenship or not, will be asked to take a visa to visit their country. All they will do, they get to claim, and upon arrival, you can get some kind of registration. But there's no reason why you should go to this dilapidated embassies and. You're looking for a visa to visit your own country. That's where you come from. And who made Nigeria attractive again to be called your country. I know a lot of you have mentally seceded from Nigeria, that's true. You're not the only ones. There are people in Nigeria, today, if you took a Titanic there, the boat will be filled and it will sink before you can leave. Because everybody wants to leave that country. It's not, because it has been a federal republic of injustice. It has been a federal republic of social injustice, political injustice, cultural injustice, economic injustice, and all kinds of injustice. And we must redress that injustice once and for all by letting into office next year a leader that is not a ruler.
Take it back!
Yes.
We have been electing rulers, we have been making mistakes upon mistakes. I have seen seven presidents come and go in Nigeria. I started in 1989 at the University of Lagos. Those of you who attended the University of Lagos before me, during my time and after my time, can testify. Those of you who attended the University of Lagos before me, during my time and after my time can testify to this. In 1989, the man who was there was Ibrahim Babangida General. After he left, they brought a man from Abayoputa. We drove him out after his four days. After Suneko came Abacha. He butchered whoever he could find. Stole Nigeria dry. He died. After him came Abdul Salam. He stole as much as he could. He's still there. After him came Cheyevu Shemun Obasonge, who used to be a military head of state. A man spent eight years in power. After he ruined the Nigerian economy, ruined his politics, he asked to be allowed to stay forever. During the time, he was defeated. And after him came Yaradua, who they knew was sick, but imposing upon Nigeria. And he died. But in dying, something unthinkable happened in Nigeria. For five months, Nigeria was governed by dead men. Yaradua had been brain dead for five months before he was pronounced dead in Abuja, uh, inside the Asorok Villa. Because our leaders are wicked. The military guys at that time, led by the man who is now Minister for Internal Affairs, Dambazoo, smuggled him, he smuggled a dead man into the presidential villa. And they started arranging visits to this dead man. They took pastors there, imams there, to come and testify to... Newspapers, reporters were reporting that the man was studying the constitution again and is about to resume office. And at the point, they started claiming that he was playing with his grandchildren. At the point, they said they saw him climbing the stairs up and down. And I called Prime Minister in those days, and that was Dora Akuyuli. I said, madam, is it true? She's late now. I said, uh, Dr. Akuyuli, is it true that the president is climbing stairwells? He said, sure, how you know they are lying is that even when he was not sick, nobody can climb. The Nigerian politician don't exercise. So, I see that. But I'm giving you this history so that you can recognize where we are headed. And after him came somebody that we all fought for and thought that could help us. Because before then, we had always said that if maybe we had a well-educated president, he would do us right. And came Dr. Goodluck Jonathan. PhD with no TCS. It's not a laughing matter. Came, he conquered the treasury. And they were moving money out of Nigeria, like the money was going out of circulation. Including moving into London here, where the criminals helped them. Then further London is to buy whatever they wanted to buy. And our brother failed completely. Somebody introduced me as coming from the southwest. Yes, it is true that I come from southwest, but actually from the Niger Delta region. I don't like to play the ethnic game because ethnicity has also failed us. Geographically, I'm actually from the Niger Delta region. Uh, we'll talk about that at another symposium in the future. After our brother came, another former military general from the mental era. Because we're looking for integrity in the country. And because the man who had a PhD had failed us so bad, we forgot to ask for the YX certificate. And we kept saying, if it's a NEPA bill, uh, we would accept. But getting that, the man also hasn't paid his NEPA bills for a long time. Because there is no light in his part of the world. That's the truth. They were powering their houses with what they call a better pass my neighbor, generative. And he came, we thought he had integrity, the man has zitch integrity. He told us he would declare his assets, no asset declaration has been made officially. But they just told us, I think I have some houses there, 150 house that never grew. They never have twins, they never have couplets, it's always 150 house. And he surrounded himself with even better thieves than the former PhD holder. They started playing games with our treasury and also playing games with our minds. But we have reached a point now that nobody can fool us anymore. Nobody can come with a fake integrity and fool us. And nobody can come with another, what we call magu-magu in Nigeria, and claim that they are forming another political alliance. They now want us to follow them. It's not happening anymore. Whether it is the tough force or the spread force, all the houses are going to be retired permanently in 2019. It was ushered in a new era. Nigeria must experience a new dawn. But if we want to see a new dawn, you must wake up as sun rises. Otherwise, before you know it, you will have to know. And you can't claim to have witnessed a new dawn. We must join hands with ourselves. The reason why I'm doing the global mobilization of Nigeria is because Nigerians are more as important as Nigerians at home. And even though, although they cannot vote, they can influence what is happening at home. In fact, we are, somebody gave us a strategy in Canada on how to get our brothers and sisters and mothers and fathers at home to vote. That you tie to your next remittance. If you are sending money home, let the person you are sending money to send to you an evidence of a PVC. If you need to add a little bit on top of the money so that he can transport himself to the PVC collector's center, please do it. But before you send the next remittance, after the PVC remittance, you must see a PVC first or a TVC, which is a temporary voter card. And if you are sending money through Western Union, if they ask you to put a question there, put it PVC. Have you got PVC question mark? Someone is calling you, that the money you sent, have you sent the question with the sign? Yes, I'm telling you, have you got your PVC? Go and tell the bank, tell our manager. And they will know that the person who sent the money to you is serious about your voting. So, these are the ways through which we will defeat the cabal that's been winning Nigeria. We cannot continue like this anymore. And I am standing in front of you today, not to come and give you any second-hand information. I have been to Nigeria in recent weeks. From Kano to the southeast and south-souths, I've been to the southwest, and I have been to satellite zones of Nigeria in Canada, in US and now in London. And we are happy to be here today in London because we have the highest concentration of politically conscious Nigerians. Even when we arrived at the airport and we were welcomed by our great friends who came to the airport, the whole waters, they were listening. The Pakistanis, Jamaicans, you could just see it. I said, is that your next president? And they say, yes. And I told them, I said, you know, you know what is important to me at this airport is that Nigerians are no longer mistreated because of the color of their skin or the color of their passport. And they once again take pride in that passport. I don't know if we need to change the color of the passport. You know, you know, sometimes, sometimes, there are certain things that need to change. Even in Nigerian land, I think it's good simple. Even if it is to just put space in the middle of this. Some of them have to change. We have to move completely from analog era into a digital future. And those of you who saw me in Nigeria, one of my best moments when I was in Nigeria was on the radio show with Minister of Communication. For me, it was the day we did this transfer of power. From analog to digital. And I tell you, I saw him again at Abuja airport. And the creature was standing there, why would sitting here come to meet me? I said, this man who's there has sequenquency. He's not suffering the consequences. And traveling around Nigeria, I came to a conclusion, and it's not the first time I've come into that conclusion, but it's fresh conclusion, that there's nothing complex about Nigeria. There's nothing big about Nigeria. Within 23 days, we traveled Nigeria. Sometimes flying by air, sometimes I would do it by Okada, motorbikes. You know, in some places, we would do it by road. We drove from Kano to Kaduna and back. And what road I traveled on in Nigeria was Kano-Kaduna road. Terrible! So when they are telling you that the Nuts is enjoying, that went to you. And the Nutsanas are desirous of change as much as savannas. The reason is this, the Nuts is not a monolithic place. The Nuts is where Benue is located, where Bouhari has allowed the bloodletting that is happening between herdsman and farmers. The Nuts is where Plato is located, where the same thing is, he's doing, he's closing his eye or turn his eye aside. Or they are even actively promoting the genocide that's going on there. The Nuts is also Taraba, where the same issue is happening. The Nuts is southern Kaduna, where the same problem is happening. The Nuts is also Kano, where there's the type of poverty that you have never seen before. It's right there. And when we traveled to see one sheik in Kaduna, Sheikh Gumi, he's a medical doctor. He told us, and he said, these Bouharidi people are talking about, the reason why he's constantly being voted into power is because the Nutsanas who are poor actually want to get out of poverty. And they have always been looking for a leader that can lead them out of poverty. They call them Talakawas, and they thought Bouhari could do it. But Bouhari had too many battles, and he has failed the core Nuts. It certainly happened in Kaduna. In our Kaduna Town Hall meeting, I think there were more people in that Town Hall meeting than we have here in London. And most of them, eighty percent, were women. Yes, you can see it online. Anyway, it's on the show, the 23 Days, after my talk here. And they were all screaming for the same thing, they want to send their children to school. They're talking about Makaranta. That is to say that they understand that education is the only way they can be muted out of poverty. And I have to remind them that the Bouhari, who is asking you to die for your beliefs, is sending his children to school in honor of... Oh, he speaks! I'm going to do something here. The last one is still in school, the daughter. Whenever the man has a toothache, he comes to London. When he wants to brush his teeth, he flies to London. And I've said it, that they say, there's a Hausa word. Oh, I don't think maybe you say, an Islamic word, it's called Monafiki. Bouhari is Monafiki Baza. And they all agree, Monafiki is a person who is... Very dishonest man being, who has been lying to all of us over these years. And I see that is not bad enough. When he should demonstrate a little bit of integrity and let Nigeria be, he's presenting himself again to become Nigeria's president. As if Nigeria is that a ghost in high school, where when you fail, you have to repeat the same class. Like Nukifidendos' father said, and I have brought him to a second term. Nigeria must reject him. And the 12 million votes that they claim Israel gets, we have done the dissection of it, there's nothing left in there anymore. Because this time around, Taraba is not voting for him. Natu is not voting for him. Benue is not voting for him. Half of Kaduna is not voting for him. Sibun Savans are not voting for him. Southwest is not voting for him. South-South is not voting for him. And the southeast definitely, no, not where it is. Local night players and Operation Picon dance is not voting for you. So, I went to the southeast. I went to the southeast. And when we go to the southeast, it was unbelievable that the people of the southeast are actually, they actually believe in Nigeria more than the people who claim that they want to live in Nigeria. A crime for succession is a crime for, you know, abandonment, marginalization. You can imagine, the southeast will report war, kill the three million people. There is no bridge since 1960. No any other have been living in the southeast. Every time, they will be rushing the Second Niger Bridge. It's always a model of the Niger Bridge in a war somewhere, that's what United States did. Bouhari said they have commenced the Second Niger Bridge. But now, when they are, they're just pillars. And I'm sure after the election, they were abandoning. Because they are just feeling it to bribe the southeastern as well. People there are smart now. What does the southeastern want? They want in Nigeria where they can do business. They want integration. They want a cargo train that can be taken, just wonderful and bad shoes. It's three hours, they must have bagged and a crap all to everywhere, things to do. They shouldn't be buying shoes from Italy, but we have the best shoes. What the usual talk made in Amma 30 years ago is no longer a joke. What you get on the job, it takes you an hour or 10 minutes to write. Because it's the poor there that we could have sent the Nigerian Army Corps of Engineers to fix. But we didn't send the Nigerian Army Corps of Engineers, we sent Operation Picon Dance. It creates more problem for us in the east. And we are wondering why people don't like to be in Nigeria. So it is not the southeast alone that has said that. Every Nigerian operates a local government, they call their house. You are the one providing your electricity, you are providing your hope, you are providing your healthcare, security, you are providing your mosque and your church, within the premises there. And when it is 7:00 PM in most urban areas in Nigeria, we have good to speak because of criminality. Thank you, thank you. We have to respect the passion that's out there. Honestly, Nigerians cannot wait till 2019. For a lot of people, it is too long. Because the longer these guys are kept in power, the more damage it brings to every fabric of our being. So I understand the passion. So I understand the passion, and help is on the way. It is not Buhari's seat that I'm taking, it is our rightful place as Nigerians. We own it, and we will take it back! I have been told that I have to make this interactive, so the more I talk, the less opportunity you have to ask me questions. But you know, you have to, we have to be grateful to ourselves that we can interact. Our politicians are not campaigning right now. Because there's nothing to campaign on. We have looked at all of them, what is Buhari going to say? What will be his basis for campaigning for a second term? Analog campaign? Or what will Attiku, what to campaign on? Is it what he did with Obasanjo? Or the fact that we still have to get him a visa to enter the US, if he wins? We have to beg the United Nations to let him come to the United Nations, because he cannot enter America proper, based on his facts. I mean, what are the others going to be campaigning on? And people have asked me, are you collaborating with other young people? Of course, we welcome their coming out, but they should also sell their ideas to everybody. They must be willing to go to every part of Nigeria. I have seen some of them, very eloquent, great ones, but they have refused to leave Icoi, in a Victoria Land. Nigeria is not Icoi, Victoria Land. And I worry about some of them. Nigeria is a tough place. If you are not prepared, they will rough handle you, and they will run away. For some of us. Maybe my appearance have been deceptive. That's what happens when you borrow suits. But honestly, what needs to be done in Nigeria, it needs a rugged person. It cannot be someone who is, you know, the people will call Ajebota. It need an Ajebako. These guys, Nigeria is a social security department. If Nigeria is not the way it is, it can never be rich. If Nigeria is not the way it is, it can never be happy. And if they are taking it away from them, that's their meal ticket, you have to be prepared for the worst. And I have been preparing myself for thirty years. I have fought all of them. Some of them, we read about them in primary school, in history books. When we go to the university, we have to fight them. Some of them, we knew about them, nineteen seventy-nine, people like Ado Ujopri, he's still minister in twenty eighteen. The ambassador of Nigeria to the US, eighty-two years old. Ambassador of Nigeria to the UK is seventy-nine years old. In the country that has rough people like you. Some of you are the ones that are making this country function the way it is. Why should Nigeria be in a scoring state, when it has some of the best pool of human resources that you can boast of? You have a doctor in the US, a Nigerian doctor, who can perform a miracle. Take out a baby from a tummy of a womb, fix it and put it back, and the baby will be gone back. He's a Nigerian! We have Nigerians in NASA, in the US. We have Nigerians everywhere. What has been sad about Nigeria is that Nigeria is the only place that don't work for Nigerians. The moment Nigerians get out of Nigeria, it starts flourishing, you know. But the reason is simple. For those of you who travel, Nigeria country who maintain four toilets at international. Any one of you tried to use a toilet before, there's always somebody there who is offering you toilet paper. He's like, do you want toilet paper? I said, well, you see me, I'm walking into the toilet. And it shouldn't be rationality. But, you know, I brought it to that level, so that you can understand the level of shame upon Nigeria. Brought to it, courtesy of these incompetent corrupt leaders that we have all over the country. And we must end their reign next year. Before we do the Q and A, I don't want to leave you without telling you what we do to turn Nigeria around. And we have a ten-point agenda, and we have enumerated, and of course, Spicer, it. We must bring the heat of our innovative ideas to Nigeria. And we have been spicing it up. And our first priority is security. Second, and also first, is power. This DJ has to be fired. We cannot go to New Nigeria with this DJ. Except, except you don't attend your ways. Anyways, and we must have infrastructure in Nigeria, there's no question about it. Everywhere we travel to abroad, one thing that we've seen, and lived around, you know, these western countries for nineteen years, in the US. They keep doing reconstruction everywhere you go, and they keep maintaining what they have, and they keep building new ones. The sad part though, is also that most of the money they are using in doing all this comes from Nigeria. Like Doctor Wengalutum said, I had to give a talk at Kent, and it was part of the reason why I said to run for president. And we found out that a lot of billions of dollars have been passing through UK banks and the UK property markets. When I started Sahara Quarters, I started with Kaio Diwundamisi, who's very popular here in Qatar. And one of the first things we did was to find Jamesy Burridge's house, somewhere here in London. The house was worth two point eight million US dollars. And inside the garage, he had bought a Bentley that had never been driven before. Whereas, people in Delta were dying of cholera, they were dying of malaria. And he was calling himself a sheikh. And eventually, he had to become the Gwibo of the prison here. We made sure that happened. I say that to tell you how rugged and prepared we are. And also to discuss how we fight corruption, because corruption is part of the Spicer anti-corruption, our Spicer program. And we will make the Nigerian economy work for the people of Nigeria. The economy that we have right now is an economy that is servicing the greedy. We must make our economy be for the meeting. And when you ask them about Nigerian economy, they show you Pyshars, what I call Microsoft PowerPoint economics. They are always showing me that something is going up. But I ask them, what about food in the belly of our people? And an economy that will increase the purchasing power of an average Nigerian. That is why we decided that we will increase the minimum wage to something close to a living wage of a hundred thousand naira per month. And some of you, some of you have raised on Facebook, you know, we have a lot of Facebook economics that will create inflation. It's a lie. When you increase the purchasing power of an average worker, in any country for that matter, he buys multiple locally. So if you are buying two pairs of shoes before, or even if you can't afford shoes, right in a new market now, or you need a pair of new shoes with eighteen thousand naira, if you get a hundred thousand, you will go to the shoemaker and order for two. And the shoemaker has to hire somebody to bring the shoes. So you are raising, motivating, and empowering the country. The truth is that everywhere in the world, when they have economic problem, they empower their people. But Nigeria, when we have economic problems, we disempower our people. That was what structural adjustment program was about. They were telling us to tighten our backs. Whereas, the Balanidas of this mode were just sticking to Nigeria's money and stashing them abroad, because our economy works for the greedy. We will also restructure Nigeria. A lot of them had a lot of questions about restructuring, and some have said that I said I don't support restructuring. I do support restructuring. What I don't support are the people who are advocating for restructuring. The voice of the young people that's foreign and not on the table where they are discussing restructuring right now. This cannot be decided for me how to restructure my future when I'm absent from there. You cannot call somebody here, call it to Abela, if he's not sitting on the barber's chair. That is what a restructuring conversation is about now. It's driven by the same, it's something here only. If you say Buhari is too old, Old Nigeria, Edwin Clark is also too old to restructure Nigeria for me. About your Adiban job, you do respect, he's too old to restructure Nigeria for me. Old Falahe is too old to restructure Nigeria for me. Certainly, President Fani Kade is too lost evil to restructure Nigeria for me. That is my argument over restructuring. Otherwise, all the beautiful things that comes with it, devolution of power, state police. I support, I live in the US, every town, county, it's called the young police. So I cannot be against state police, but we must discuss how economically we also empower the state to pay the policemen. Because God knows now that they are not paying workers. If they have state police, you know how dangerous a police officer can be, even when they are paid. Imagine what it would be if they are not paid, they are not paid, a complete chaos and armed robbery, happening right in front of us, because now they have governments. So, we do restructuring, we don't Spicer now. And the key part of it is health, health is key, we're discussing health here. And I thank you guys, this is why I think we hit the ground running. Just one of the most competent Nigerians within the head sector here, and elsewhere. Education, big deal for us. We cannot move, we can't move this country forward without investing the liberty in education of our kids. And we must provide free and qualitative education. And we must bring technology to bear my education system. I went to Oun Dost, my hometown, three, three days straight. The same chair I sat on in nineteen eighty, in nineteen eighty, I went and entered secondary school in nineteen eighty, is still there. The windows of Oluvas, there's still, half of them blown off, is still there. It's not that somebody raised it up, there's no way you can produce people under these traditional conditions, I expect that. You find the right workforce to power the future of Nigeria, that's why they're great, the most interesting people in Nigeria. Agriculture, the only country to save the percent of area growth here, a rent economy, collecting rent from oil. And oil is a bad form of state, it's a busy economy, very dangerous. But we are not practicing like the culture they say we're practicing now, and culture by propaganda. Where the minister of agriculture will say that, there are some rice mills that are closing down in Malaysia, and there are no rice mills in Nigeria popping up. You know, you can't, you know, it's not even logical, it's idiotic to say that. So I think in Malaysia, people have come out and said, man, what's wrong? We did a research, imports from Malaysia, we think that of rice have naturally decreased in the last two years. Because, what the reason is, that they are coming to Benue Republic into Nigeria. But they're lying to you that, you know, rice is not one of that. They don't trust the rice that they are packaging and coming regularly, they're writing, more rice. These guys don't have, so Nigeria should lay into, not only feed itself, Nigeria should be able to, the self-sufficient economy to feed almost the rest of Africa. That is what we bring to Nigeria, like, to full technology, to firehouse. And that will especially address the issue of low herdsman. It was the ranch grow house. And if you ranch down, you have the possibility of generating bowel gas from the ranching. And by extension, electricity and fertilizer. When we talk about electricity, we talk about this. We are the only way people in the market, in this market, who are trying to generate four thousand five hundred megawatts of electricity through renewable energy, solar. Northern Nigeria is three four hours sunshine, and it may be for Boko Haram. By the time we do four thousand five hundred megawatts of electricity, Boko Haram will run out of soldiers. It's not the one we want. But, that doesn't mean that we not have to teach our ministry. Because right now, we are the most supporting Boko Haram. Last year, they gave Boko Haram five million euros to Shorax and Bemis. That is what Buhari came to do, which was contrary to what we promised we would do when he built the power. And tourism, it's not a big deal for us. Look at our tourism, it's not to go and see a new rock to load. And there are actually no roads that move from Lagos to Abelton. That's why our structure is important, so that people can start going to those places. But we have a lot more that we vary on that tourism. Look at the entertainment, Nigeria is entertaining the world as we speak. I got a taxi cab yesterday in London, I had to ask the Indian guy, can you find me a station that plays Nigerian music? It didn't take you five seconds to find it, because our guys are very good in the entertainment sector. We are doing well in sports, which we vary on their tourism too. Our guys are playing very well, and as you know, we are the biggest adopters of international teams that are moving around us. So we love sports, but we don't have stadium in the country. So that, all these things have to be built. Finally, we also got a very powerful cultural tool in our hands. The movies that we are making out of Nigeria is being watched all over the world. But we are not investing appropriately, we are not domesticating what these innovative people are doing with movies. It's not part of our university education, it's not part of our investment portfolio, and all of that must change come next year. And I just have to plead with you, that we are just few months away from independence. We are a few months, a few months of true freedom for Nigeria. And it's not about me alone, it's about every single one of you in this room who has bought into the dream. If you had this meeting with this number of Nigerians anywhere in Nigeria, it would cost nothing less than fifty million naira. Because they have to pay everybody who is coming to sit down. Even in London, they did it, I heard Attiku came here and did a Town Hall meeting, people were paid, still they didn't show up. Buhari had to pay people to do a support rally for him the other day, still a lot of people did not show up. But you have come here today on your own volition, funded yourself. The only thing I think bad about that, when I walked in the room, I thought more people came to Kaduna, but I think London has finally disgraced Red. I am wrapping up on this note, it can't be better than this. But I have two things to say. One is to look behind me, we want to fund this by ourselves. So that we can also retire the godfathers and godmothers that usually purchase the presidency and give it to the dumbest in our midst. Secondly, I have to personally, personally thank the organizers of the London Town Hall meeting. If I start mentioning all their names, we'll be here till tomorrow. But I just want to thank all of you for making this a... But I just want to thank all of you for making this a huge success. You are doing this for the future. And we have seen the future and we've seen the promised land. We are going to be there, all of us together. When I was going to Nigeria to start the enlightenment and conscientization that we did, a lot of people were afraid for me. They said, how do you even make it out of the airport? When we got to the airport, the security agents were begging me, please help us beg your people outside. Two thousand people outside waiting for us. We went everywhere Nigeria without a single police. And people are still saying, please don't take your security for granted, it's true. Thank you, and we're going to take questions now. And we know you have a lot of questions. If we cannot get to all your questions, it is not because we don't want to.
Don't worry, we'll come to you.
But please do us a favor, just go to the questions straight. And try to ask one question so that we can get to as many questions as possible, thank you. So the moderator.
Hello, hello everyone, thank you very much. The mic will be passed in the crowd and we have a system here so that everyone will be evenly represented. So we have the list of questions. We have a number that we're going to give everyone, we've given some, we're giving to one or two people on the aisle here. Hold up this ladies and gentlemen, it's going to get to you. I would love to first of all call Professor Isaac Shodende, who will be talking to us about what do, Shodende, who will be talking to us about what do we owe Nigeria. But I must let you all know, ladies and gentlemen, that like Shorref said, when he was giving compliments to the organizers, we really put our back to this. And we said that this is going to be the mother of all town hall meetings. And whatever was gonna, whenever, whatever victory we have here today, as we can all see, it means that there's going to be victory in Nigeria. It's just something London does to Nigeria, there's a certain influence, we just don't understand. Once it's big and successful there, it will be big and successful in Nigeria. We'll be going round very soon and I would love for you to have your hands up. We're only going to be taking thirty persons, thirty questions and I'll be handing you over to Mr Gabriel Nwese, who's our moderator. Welcome, Mr Gabriel, thank you very much. And I'll be giving out these questions fairly, I'm not looking at faces.
Thank you very much. Just to make this easy for all of us here, I'll tell you what's going to happen. First, we're going to start this, we're taking four questions from the front row. Two at the left side, a backside, and two at the right hand side. Now, we're going to start first from. Okay, please, could you have the mic, where's the second mic, please, okay. Rose, Rose, please, can you give them numbers, please? Please, you can only take four, please, at this stage, but four from the front row, please, four. If you, Rose, would you spread it? Just four, just four from the front row, please, one to four.
Number one, I think we have number one, number two.
Just four people from this front row. Rose, Rose, that's okay, please, that's okay. Now, please, hold on, hold on, please, at the back, at the back. Don't worry, we'll take you on the second stage, second stage, we just want only four best from this group. At the back, can we have preferably a man and a woman from the left, my left hand side at the back?
And this is very unfair.
The man, the man on yellow, the man on yellow, and the lady on yellow, okay, that's fine. Rose, and the right hand side.
Once again, we're still live, the teacher is gone away, she's all happy. I hope you're enjoying it as much as we are enjoying it like in London.
Um, I see man there, wearing a black, a black car.
That is absolutely unacceptable to you.
No, no, no.
You guys not know that it's only four people that the last person.
No, 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 four, no, four questions at a time, four questions at a time.
Hold on, please.
Four questions at a time.
What, what are we here for? What we guys, it's not a bar.
Just, calm down, please, please. Please, calm down. Can I have, ladies and gentlemen, one house? Take it, take it, take it, take it. One house, one house. Okay, number one, please, number one, please, can I have the question, number one, please? Can I have the mic, yeah?
Hey, I, now, I have the mic, they still not, I didn't.
Excuse me, are you number one, please? No, no, hold on.
I was not given the number, I think I'm special and somehow I was given the mic.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, 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 listen.
Yes, you keep them, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They're further, I'm sorry.
Hello, silence please. My name is Dr. Olu Adenbete, the founder of Mobility Telephone Disabled People.
One house, just a minute, one house, please, one house, one house. Please, here, ask, this is not the time for comments, it's for questions. And your question is limited to thirty seconds, thirty seconds, please, not a time for long comments or long questions, please. And I have a right to put you off, please, thirty seconds, please, please, you can go, please, sir.
Thank you, my name is Dr. Olu Adenbete, the founder of Mobility Telephone Disabled People. I wasn't born like this, but in Apple, they started like I do for eighty years now. Please, sir, I want to know, sir, what are you going to do for the disabled people in the Nigeria community? Because we are suffering a lot. I went to Nigeria, two thousand and fifteen, I saw a lot of people, which even though with my equipment that we sent to Nigeria, their people are crying. So please, sir, I want you to take it on board, I want to know what you're going to do there.
Thank you very much, that question is on the disabled, disabled people in Nigeria. Number two, the person holding number two on the front row. Please, we have to be sure you have number two, I think that's you, okay, please. Thirty seconds, please, very, please be sure that that's the person holding number two, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
My name is Prince Mosamb, I'm the aspirant, senior of Ode State, come nineteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I suggest, it's my question, it's what we did in this country in nineteen ninety-three, we are prone to deco. We have anti-corruption, I saw some of my mates here this afternoon, and that we are Nigerian project.
Excuse me, sir, please, sorry, sir.
My, my, my suggestion is that I want us to form a march rally between all Nigerians. So we know that we are taking it back, thank you.
Thank you very much. Number three, number three, please. Please, let's make this session for questions, please.
Kareem, I'm sorry, it's my game. And just to remind us that we took it now for two, for the APC to Koka Nigeria. They went to every evil person, they went to Ina, they went to Otan. And now, we've been emphasizing on the youth coming on board. What exactly are you, I've had a couple of references to this, but it was not satisfactory enough. And we must conscientize you that you remember that you have to go to all alike, they also vote, if you see them, they'll be shocked. What are you doing exactly in bringing on board the likes of Prince Mogalu, Adamo, Fena, Alistache Ode and all that? Beyond rhetorics, in two thousand, I mean, twelve years ago in the Battle of Lagos, we're fighting to bring out, to bring back the awesome, that's what brings us today in Nigeria. We were only fighting, we were not planning for after winning elections. However, we were granted eventually, we were asked, we were asked to go back to faculty and staff at two thousand and eighteen.
One minute, I'm sorry, please.
By the time we organize elections, those that were not at the forefront of the struggle, they want faculty elections. So what exactly are you doing to bring these guys on board? Every people did must relax.
Number four, please, number four. Please keep your questions very short, please. I allowed you extra about forty seconds, please. Number four, who has number four? Is that you? Okay, I want to say this, please, for those who are watching us online, you can send your questions online and we'll take your questions as well. If you have a question, you can write it out and send to me straight here, I can read it out, I can assure you that, please. If you have, my name is Gabriel, you can write it and send to me if you are here right now, please. If you're online, you can send your questions as well, please. Number four.
I am number four.
Please, oh, thank you, sir.
I did not come to ask questions, I was invited here to promise, because I will just give the bullet points and finish. My subject was going to be what each one of us owes Nigeria. I was a presidential aspirant myself, I'm a professor of hematology, Oxford and Cambridge train. Number, number two, I know the whole of Nigeria, I've traveled around the whole of Nigeria. Number three, I am, I am one of the few people in Nigeria, I am eighty-three and a half. I have never given a COBOPRIDE and I've never taken a COBOPRIDE. And yet I was professor of medicine in the University of Ibadan and in the University of Ijle. But what I want to say to you is this, that until, until you and I, every one of the one eighty million people in Nigeria, until they realize that it is not what Nigeria has to give me for what I have to do for Nigeria, that is going to win the championship. Until we get to high Nigeria. And finally, finally, the youth, I agree that the youth should take back Nigeria. But it is crucial that you must go down all the LGA's in Nigeria and find out who has manifested property in each LGA. Before you start to determine who to vote for and who will vote. Because the chief problem in Nigeria is corruption.
Thank you very much, take it, take it, take it. Um, just the fifth question I'm going to pass to Molyne Shorref, and then I will give him an opportunity to answer the five questions. This was sent to me in writing, I would encourage you to please put your name, just because I did not make this announcement earlier, I'm just going to take this question, but please, you must have your name there. What are your plans to improve the healthcare system in Nigeria when you become president? What are your plans to improve the healthcare system? So, five questions for him, we have to comment anyway, three questions for him at this stage. When he's finished, we'll move to the left hand side at the back to take those two questions and then to the two more questions at the right. And then we'll go back to the second stage of questions, thank you.
Thank you, most of these questions, out of the five questions, actually two of them are the kind of things we get when we see endorsement. I think the agreement we have from the conversation and this gathering is that we want to take Nigeria back.
Yes.
And I want to answer the question about the disabled people, sir. I actually met with disabled Nigerians and the only presidential can, sorry, aspirant that has met with the disabled. I did during my twenty-three day visit to Nigeria last month. And I met them in Lagos at the national stadium where they gather on a regular basis. You would be shocked that Nigeria may have on paper plan for disabled people. But there's nothing, including federal public buildings, that provide access for disabled people. And for me, that is where we have to start. There must be recognition in our public transportation system, in our building, fast people's access for disabled people to move around. And we have promised them that every disabled Nigerian verified, we are not talking about disabled politicians. Talking about disabled Nigerians would be paid is some of fifty thousand naira per quarter for a start. So that they can have something that they can live on. You know the saddest thing, the able people in Nigeria do not win medals when they go to the Olympics. It's only the disabled that have been able to bring us medals. But we don't, we don't, we don't even, they back put them back from the Olympic Games. It takes them months before they can be the president, the people who don't win medal can see the president faster than the people who win medal. So please, it's a priority for me to ensure that they get the, their rights respected and that we enforce all rules according to global standard on how to treat, you know, physically, I don't like to call them disabled, physically challenged people, thank you. Um, we, the government here said we should go to every corner and go to every evil to get like the APC did. We have enough good people to deliver Nigeria for us, we don't need any evil in Minna. An evil man and the evil forest anywhere, we should just bond together, good people. I know what you're saying, I have been challenged several times that you need a messenger, you need Balangina. And I said to myself, didn't the messenger lose total? He was so, he was such a powerful person, he will still be president of Nigeria today. So if he could be defeated when he was the president of Nigeria, he can be defeated even now, we don't have to go to him. And if he was the human resources manager of Nigeria, would have been fired a long time ago. Because it's found of hiring very, very bad people to manage Nigeria. But we need to mobilize, that's the point you're making, ensure that we reach as many people as possible. The advantage we have is the political capital we bring to this game. A lot of you are already related to us, we started with nothing. When we started GoFundMe about two months and two weeks ago, they reported it and shut it down. But the next day, I wrote a letter to GoFundMe that on my honor, there's no way I can perpetrate fraud and they apologized to me. And we still, we still, they have forty thousand dollars now, you know. That's what we've been using and spending to travel around. In London, we didn't have to pay for anything including food, we don't have to pay for transportation, we don't have to go for water. We have, some of our net has given us a whole apartment and we're rolling around inside of it. So we are only big in London, courtesy of all of you who have joined hands together and, and sure. Though this time around, we also don't need to package any rags for anybody. What we have to sell is give our people the idea on how to liberate Nigeria.
Yes.
And Professor Shodende has left, yes. We wish that we voted for you, you have been a better man than the one we have here. But yes, he said we should consider what we can give to Nigeria. The person standing in front of you has only given to Nigeria, never taken anything from Nigeria, to be honest. I've only taken beating from the police, expulsion, you know, twice from the University of Lagos. I've taken detention by the DSS, abuse, so even when I went and did NYC, they locked me up. So this is what I have become in spite of the abuse. So we have to say to Nigeria, don't, don't abuse the citizens. People cannot give to Nigeria when Nigeria doesn't even provide the opportunity to give back to Nigeria. If some of us go back to Nigeria today with all our skills and you present to a Nigerian official a proposal on how to do anything good, the first thing you will ask you is what is needed for me?
Yes.
And if you cannot tell him directly what is needed for him, he will steal your proposal and give it to another person. So they will not fund your proposal, you will be seeing your proposal on NTA. But they will never implement even the proposal that you brought to them. One of the things we will do about transparency and property in the country is that it is high time we start making asset declaration funds public. All the owners of all the companies in Nigeria, there should be a portal like you have in Company House in the US. Because that's the only way we can get all these senators, governors, who are awarded contracts to themselves and their families. There's no reason why we should be hiding ownership of companies. We should make them available where anybody can download it. So if the federal government says that somebody is getting a contract somewhere, you should be able to go online, search the name of the company and know the directors of the company. And if you have any business to suspect them, you can report to me later or the media can do that. We don't need an F O I to do that, Nigeria is still the only country that hides ownership of companies. You, any company in the UK, you can find their owners and that is where I play most of the time when I'm looking for groups in Nigeria. I come and look for their companies in the UK. When you don't find it easily, you can go into the electoral roll.
Yeah.
And find it. And it will give you connections to other companies that they are interested in. That's how we catch them here. We can use that to also catch the people at home. Because our senators and House of Rep members, what they call constituency projects, is the biggest booting of the Commonwealth in recent times. They take two hundred million per constituency project and they award the contract to themselves. And they still don't implement the contract, they still don't do the contract. We have to change that by maybe so that all the owners of companies in Nigeria are uploaded on a website owned by the federal governments. It's as simple as that. Uh, suggestion about mass rallies. We, we are, what is mass rally in modern days? But this is the smaller mass rally. We are reaching a critical mass. Something has shifted and has changed in Nigeria politically. Just as we are here having the conversation, by the time we end this conversation, over twenty thousand or thirty thousand Nigerians are also watching virtually on Facebook Live. They are participating, they are sending us questions. So this is a robust engagement and that is the thing they don't like to do. They don't want to talk because they don't want to be challenged.
Yeah.
There's no of them, I keep saying, that can engage like this. For the first time, you need a president that can stand up for five hours and ask questions. Not the one that cannot stand. I'm not mocking the ones that are sick, but Nigeria cannot be sick and be managed by a sick president at some time. It's just, it's just logical that we not keep making that mistake. You know, one time we had a dead body ruler, now we have an infirm person ruler. We can't continue like this and expect the country to move forward. So we'll take the next four questions. Uh, please, I urge you, if your question has already been answered, don't worry. You can ask me later. There's gonna be plenty of room to ask questions, even after we have won the election next year.
That's right.
We'll still be doing town hall meetings. Our focus now should be how we defeat these people in a very robust way. Like I said, by evening of February sixteen at this time, we should know the results. And Babash should be thinking about how he retires permanently.
Dara.
There's Dara.
Okay, please, uh, thank you very much, take it, take it. London.
Live.
We're taking two questions from the left side of the back of the hall. Um, that will be number five and number six, the two people wearing yellow. So please, um, can you pass the mic to the man, uh, the guy at the front first, yes? Thirty seconds please.
Um, good afternoon everyone, my name is Buky Olawo. Um, my question is this, every year we have a lot of graduates finishing their NYC. On your first day in office, what is your plan to engage these people?
So you're talking about youth unemployment after graduation and NYC. Okay, the lady.
Hello everyone, hi Mr. Shoray. Um, my question is pertaining to the transportation system in Lagos at the moment. So, um, the, I went to Nigeria two months ago and the only way to get about in Lagos is literally on the road. And that is one of the main problems why there's constantly traffic on the Third Main and Bridge. Do you have any plans on possibly building any more transportation infrastructure? Or what are you planning to do about it basically? Thank you.
Thank you, that's on the transportation system. I know you said Lagos, but I believe that would be the whole of Nigeria as the president of the country. Thank you anyway, um, we've got two more questions here, please. Um, if the ushers can pass the mic quickly to this part of the hall, please.
One love Nigeria.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please, no, I'm sorry, please, I'm sorry, please. I am sorry, please, I said two questions here, two questions here, please, first, please.
Sorry, are we spreading it now or using the numbers?
This is the first stage, we've taken four questions from the front, two at the left-hand side of the back and then two at the right hand, we'll go to the second stage, please. If you have your questions, you can put them in writing and thank you very much for those who have sent their questions. We'll read them out, yeah, number seven and eight here. Um, there was a guy who was wearing a black.
I'm seven, I'm seven.
Sorry. Who was giving a number in there? Do they have any number in there, check? Okay, take two, two, two only, please. Okay, take two. Has he got a, has he got a number? Okay, please, thirty seconds.
Hi Mr. Omoyele, my name is Sambali Wadidah. My question goes to us, what are you gonna do? Because I'm so much particular about the database in Nigeria. We need to know how many people we are willing in Nigeria so that anything that's gonna be disseminated to everyone have to be disseminated well. What are you gonna be doing in collecting the database of every Nigerians? So that everything could be, um, right and accurate.
Thank you very much, and then the last person at that side of the hall, yes? Please. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shoray, uh, my name is Sadiq Swabenavieh. Uh, I just wanna ask a question. Are you take, my name is Sadiq Swabenavieh. Okay. Are you taking Nigerians, uh, for granted? And if you are not, why haven't you apologized for to Nigerians? Like others who brought this, uh, catastrophic, deceitful, uh, cruelest and corrupt, uh, governments, uh, on board? And, uh, in a civilized society like United Kingdom and the one you, uh, you reside in, United Kingdom, uh, I, I believe you should be in jail by now.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, thank you, that's all, that's all. Four questions there, the fifth one, the fifth one, one. Hold on please, hold on, ladies and gentlemen, just hold on. We're gonna go back to the second stage of questions, just hold on. The fifth one is just a comment, I'll read this and I'll tell Shoray to answer our questions. He says, um, um, we have, we have to get people to translate all the agenda and manifesto of Omoyele Shoray in all the languages of Nigeria so that our grassroots people must be acquainted with the Take It Back agenda. Thank you, so that's a comment for you, thank you sir.
Thank you. I will, uh, start by addressing the issue of, uh, youth employment. Uh, but before then, since the NYC, that is the National Youth Service Board, as we mentioned, I should say that we also have plans to increase the allowances from whatever it is now to fifty thousand naira per one. And also plans to put in place an insurance policy that if anything bad befalls a Yoko, that their parents will be paid ten million naira, uh, as compensation. And we know this because of what happens to some of them a few years ago. In terms of employment, we have said in our plan, that one of the things we are doing right away is to hire two hundred teachers, two hundred thousand teachers, train them for six months to tackle our education sector. And my understanding is that the NYC turns out about three hundred thousand coppers every year. So we are absorbing right away on an annual basis about two hundred thousand of those people to do teaching. We have plans to hire one sixty thousand primary healthcare workers across Nigeria. Reason is simple, most people in Nigeria die never even checking their blood pressure. That's the truth. And with that primary healthcare, we would not be able to lift Nigeria out of a situation where this Nigerian state has lived longer than most of people that were born when they had independence. The average life expectancy of a Nigerian person is around fifty-three. Nigeria is fifty-eight, so if you were born in ninety-six, you are supposed to have died. Very sad, yeah, it's, it's the truth. Uh, we also have plans, as I mentioned earlier, to bring in true solar power, renewable energy of four thousand five hundred, I mean four thousand five hundred megawatts just from solar, renewable energy. To put those pieces together, you know, it requires nothing less than a million hertz across Nigeria. And it will also include transfer of technology skills to the people who are doing that. So that is one point three million jobs right there that will be provided. And you know Nigeria because we're over there, Nigerians. Anytime you have a hundred pounds, you send it to Nigeria, you are helping nothing less than ten people right there. It has a multiplier. When somebody is employed, it's also helping a chain of people along the, uh, along that value, uh, chain. So it is very important to let you know that the construction of infrastructure we want to do in Nigeria will also bring nothing less than two million jobs across Nigeria. And somebody has written to me here that he thinks that my plans are a little bit simplistic. No, they are not. These are plans that will be carried out from day one in the office. You will not be in doubt as to what I'm interested in doing. What would interest you is that since we started this campaign some, let's say, two months and two weeks ago, everything we have promised, the federal government is doing it. They have suddenly said that they can pay workers sixty-six thousand naira now. They have increased allowances of coppers last week. The Lagos Ibadan rule that we use as a basis for making fun of them, they have released money last week. The infrastructure, turning Nigeria into a construction site, they have started talking about it. So they are already stealing our manufacturing. But we told them, keep doing it, we are not coming back. So just do the best you can, your best is not good enough for Nigeria. But the fact that they are even doing this shows that Nigeria is capable of fixing itself. But they just refused to do anything for three years. Last year to the election, they want to bribe you with their usual cosmetic change that they do. We are no longer interested in chicken change. Transportation across Nigeria, the infrastructure we be building will be, I don't like to use world-class, because Nigerians are already world-class people. We like world-class things, you know. I've lived in the US for nineteen years and I swear by my mama that each time I found out about a new cellphone that's just been made, it's from Nigeria. Because somebody will call you and say, can you help me buy, can you buy me a cellphone, a Samsung something edge? Then I have to go and Google it and find it, because we love good things. So why don't we have good leaders that can give us a good country? So we have to vote for great leaders in the next administration. Transportation, we need mass transit, there's no alternative to it. By now we should have a bullet train going from Lagos to Port Harcourt that can take you there in three hours. And don't tell me that we can't pay for it, because the money that was stolen by those guys who were doing fuel, uh, fuel subsidy fraud was twenty-six billion dollars and change. That was how much they stole within four years under Jonathan. Who I think should be in jail, uh, not me. And, and in, in, in doing that, about the same time, listen to this, China built one of its fastest rail lines between Beijing and Zingbo, which I don't know how to pronounce Chinese word, forgive me, for twenty-six billion dollars. And it caught the transportation between China, I mean between Beijing and that place by three hours. Bullet trains, it was designed by a French designer, the same amount of money our people stole. Importing petrol into Nigeria with ships that are signed ten years ago. That is what China used to build its best infrastructure in a long time. China has gone to what they call ghost cities. You know what ghost cities are? Cities that have apartments that nobody is living in. They have solved their housing crisis. Nigeria is also in need of seventeen million housing units. At the minimum. When we start building it, it will employ as many as possible, uh, people. So mass transit is the solution. You cannot be transporting people around Nigeria with luxurious buses. And then you start complaining, because mass transit will solve two problems. Move a lot of people, goods and services around and it will increase our economy. It will cut out armed robbery and kidnapping. Because you don't want to stay on the side of a train to hijack it now. Yes. And how do hijack a train that's moving at two hundred miles per hour? You have to be a really good armed robber, you know. So it will cut crime and road accidents by a huge percentage. So you put less pressure, all of these issues that we have with dangerous drugs killing people. Why don't we carry our oil, petrol from Ido to Kano, we just get cow's coches and that fast?
As we used to do.
As we used to do, thank you. So people just make it as if to run Nigeria, it is rocket science. But guess what, if it is rocket science, I'm a rocket scientist. And we've got a lot of rocket scientists who are Nigerians who will come and deliver governance in, in rockets. So we'll be firing the rocket of development in every part of Nigeria. So that is for transportation. We just have to have a robust policy, I mean, in London, you blame yourself if you have a car. Same thing in New York, because you can go everywhere, you know, through the tube. And our leaders see these things. It is their money that they use, it's our money they use in building the London Tube here now, through Shell, BP and the rest of it. In addition to the one they steal and bring in here through their banks. It is our money that passionately built Dubai. It's our money that is building some cities in US, it's a place they call Potomac, where Atikwa and the rest had their houses, you know, which has now been sold because you can't enter the US, you can't go back to the mansion. Under Sarari, brother, there was one who exposed all of those houses. They go to the one by Odju Zokalo and all that. And the moment we started exposing them, they became crime scenes. Yes, so we have to deliberately invest in modern infrastructure. There's no escaping it. There's no other alternative than to do it and do it now. I met, I mean, by the way, this has afforded me to be meeting some great Nigerians. So we won't have a problem putting a cabinet together, yeah. A lot, a lot of people have been submitting resumes and I ask them, have I won yet? And body meetings with these guys on how to develop ideas, the ideas there, they are honest people, honest business people, who know where we can find the funding, who know where we can find the cement, who know where we can find the gravel, who know where we can find the sand and who know where we can find the wheelbarrow. who know where we can find the gravel, who know where we can find the sand, and who know where we can find the wheelbarrow. But they don't allow these ideas to flourish because Nigeria is a country with contractors without builders. How many do we have data collection? I am a data person. My life revolves around data analysis. That is what I do as Saharibootas. I have to every day, every minute look at data. So I'm a sucker for data, needless the way to put it. And the data to develop Nigeria is right there inside Nigeria. The telephone companies, telecommunications companies have captured enough data of Nigerians. An average Nigerian has got two cellphones. The banking sector has done a good job of capturing data through BBN. The passport offices, data, data is flying over the place. I think all we should worry about data is how to protect our data so that it doesn't fall into wrong hands. I can guarantee that already we have a good idea of how many Nigerians we have out there. So the problem is not data, it is to find the person who can use the data. You cannot have a person who uses a nineteen sixty-five method to synthesize and analyze a twenty thousand and eighteen data. We cannot have it. The people that we have now, they don't even know means and mode. And what's the other one, statistics? Media means and mode. That's the, that's the oldest data statistic collection now. They don't know it. Because these guys never even did it, they never did it in school. But for us, we are using, we know how to use the technology to, you know, analyze data. Look at what we are doing transparently here. As we are here, we don't longer need a television station to be broadcasting us live. All of us who have live on Facebook are reaching more people than the NTA can ever reach their entire life. Yes, so we have disrupted that space. And data collection in a way that is disruptive is something that I love and I, I just need to move in there, collect that of the telecom companies, the banks and the passports. And every other place that we've been collecting data from, synthesize, analyze and digitize it. And put, it's something that they don't know that we know also. We know how to visualize data. Because data is useless if you cannot make it look attractive. If you can't make it look sexy, as I say. You have to visualize data, infographics, all those things, putting the data, you will know where you are supposed to be, where you are not supposed to be. We use it even in our election campaign now. We know where to go. When we wanted to come to Nigeria, quite honestly, if Nigeria was the way it should be, most of you would not be here. That's the truth. That is the emotional part of why we are sitting here. All of us know what we go through, the depression that you have to go through when it's cold, you know? The hustling that you have to do to pay your mortgage, to pay your car notes. At the end of the day, you are never going to be a British person, even though they give you a British passport. You are still a Nigerian because somewhere there, data is hidden in your passport. Yes, that says that you are from Iguazu. Or that you are from Kano, or you are from Nibawa. So there's nothing that we should not be discussing apologies in a very deep, deep manner. And I understand what the brother is saying that somehow maybe in two thousand and fourteen, we thought that we brought Bouhari. No, we didn't bring, why, you know the person who brought Bouhari, Jonathan? It was his performance that brought Bouhari. And he was the one who also physically. So he was the one who actually physically handed over to Bouhari, not me. As far as I say that I'm not saying it to deny it, I didn't campaign for Bouhari, can't find any campaign of me. There's some people who did, some people got paid to campaign for Bouhari or Jonathan. Never, I was asked the BBC yesterday, they thought they had a fact. They said, you need to take money from Bouhari. I said, no, because I don't accept money from politicians. I don't, I don't accept adverts from governments. I would say to only here, I take, we take adverts on Saharibootas from banks because they have diaspora products. But not from the government. As far as I'm concerned, how would you be a government and you want to come advertise a road that's not, that's just been constructed? And you want to spend more money advertising a road of three kilometers on newspapers instead of going to build the next set of roads? If you want to advertise a road, let people be using it and let them advertise it as the best road. Not advertise it on my page. So, but I tell you, if you know how other countries operate, you will know that even the man that made the appointment to ask me to apologize should be the one in jail right now. In fact, a string of Nigerian leaders would should be in jail. The man who ran the best economy in Brazil, Lula, is going to jail. And nobody is asking him to be a local tourist that, oh, I was the best president. No. He's just stole a little money and he's headed to jail. The press, the former president of South Korea is heading to jail. Why is it that our own leaders don't go to jail? That's why, because we don't send them to jail, is the reason why some of you will ask some of us come apologize to them. They are the ones who want apology and they are the ones who should be in an underground cell that they built themselves. Sorry, uh, if I sound a little bit high pitched, you know? I just don't get that we don't do, if we do things right, a lot of these guys will not be free. You know that Wanda, Wanda is still staying in Masha, in Mina. The one in what I think is on, the man, Abu Bakr, who is owner of Nigeria, is the owner of the discourse. They are still selling Nigerians, I mean Nigeria to themselves and they have sold off down the river. But because, you know, we have this stupid cultural mentality of you have to respect your elders. Elders that don't respect themselves don't deserve no respect.
I don't want to be frustrated by it, but it's going to be a different country next year.
Take it!
Take it!
Take it!
Take it!
What are we gonna do?
We're gonna do it!
What are we gonna do?
We're gonna do it!
On the road!
Take it!
Take it!
You know, we've, um, we've received quite a lot of questions here and also we are getting questions from online. I'm, I'm not, I'm not ignoring any of you here at this hall, but I just want to take five from here first and then we'll give, um, Mr. Shoride opportunity to answer some of these questions. I'll read them out quickly, okay? Um, from NEE, the infrastructure construction management. Statistically, rich and comfortable people in Nigeria do not vote. They also often do not register. Yet, their votes, um, their votes are counted. How do you intend to ensure that you engage the average Nigerian to vote and ensure one vote, one, one vote means one vote? Then from Dyo Bakare, there are so many good things in this country that, uh, make Nigerians to stay here. Which of these would you bring to Nigeria for our benefit? Which of the good things in, uh, in developed countries would you be taking to Nigeria? Uh, we have, uh, this person has not written his, his, our name, but I'll just take this for benefit of, um, for the people here. When will we know the political platform? There is a lot of anxiety about this. That's on your political platform you've been reading, running from. And then number four, how do you intend to reduce the recurrent expenditure to the capital? If federal civil service is overloaded in a capitalist economy? Some of these questions are already repeated by you, so I'll just, and the last one before I give him the mic. The nuclear energy for electricity is cheaper than solar panel. Thirty-one countries in the world use it. Do you support nuclear energy in Nigeria and will you go for it? So they are very simple questions. So we'll just take the no or yes from him and then we'll move on quickly.
Thank you. Uh, let me start from the bottom this time around. Nuclear energy, I, it was considered earlier in the campaign, but we dropped it. Uh, it comes with very, very delicate risks, uh, that Nigeria is not in the place to mess with nuclear energy. Uh, you don't want half of Nigeria to blow up one day because somebody refused to close the door, the door. And this could happen. Uh, and so the other part is that the rest of the world is also actually abandoning it. The US has reduced its nuclear energy consumption to ten percent of its energy made. Germany almost has completely, uh, closed down, uh, their nuclear bases. So you know what happened to Japan when they had tsunami? They are still reeling from that. So I am not in support or in favor of nuclear energy. Renewable energy is maybe expensive at the beginning, but it will pay for itself. Right now, there are solar panels that comes with warranties of fifty years at a time. And their batteries are, they keep getting better. So, uh, I think that's the best way to go. But we still also have gas, by the way. In Ogone Land alone, there are about nine billion cubic feet of gas underneath the ground. But we have to clean up Ogone Land first before we can go after their gas, or gas anywhere in the Niger Delta region. Uh, what was the, you had the question about the current expenditure on civil service. The biggest problem of our civil service that most people don't know is that most of our workers are ghost workers. Twenty-one percent of the civil service in Nigeria are fake workers, you know, including some of the politicians. You know, you know the number one ghost worker in Nigeria is the president of the country. So, but serious note, if you push the civil service, uh, workforce of ghost workers, you will have workers that are real and you will even employ new hands who will be paid and, uh, what's paying those workers now? Because ghost worker salaries are going into the hands of directors. But we need to rejuvenate our civil service. The civil service in Nigeria today is not a modern civil service, cannot deliver in the future. It sounds the service to Nigerians. This is the reason why, as I said, we cannot have a civil service where people are not incentivized or they are underpaid and expect them to perform wonders. First is to incentivize them. It would be my preference that anybody who's been in Nigeria's civil service for thirty years will be incentivized to be. The incentive there is that we pay you the next five years' salary. You leave so that we can hire new hands, people who can do the real work that civil services do around the world. They are not, we cannot call Nigeria's civil service, they do not, they are not as civil servants. One, they are not civil, a lot of them are also not servants. A lot of them are richer than the country. So we have to also forge the civil service of corrupt people. And civil service has been around as a corrupt entity for so long that even our judiciary is beginning to legitimize that corruption. If somebody is arrested and is being granted bail, a judge will ask you to go and produce a civil servant on level fourteen with two houses in Abuja. What is two houses? That's hundred million Naira each. So the judge is saying you should find a thief in the civil service with two houses. But nobody complains about this. You are, you know, you are experiencing corruption in civil service by asking someone who's looking for someone to bail him to go and produce a civil servant with two houses in Abuja. Where do they get two houses from? There's no stealing. And the judge is saying it's all right to bring that. So, and I'm sure nobody was aware of this. Because even the lawyers, they will go into town and bring civil servants, they have five houses for you. There are some civil servants in Nigeria that have forty houses. One was found with forty-two billion Naira. Remember the pastor that died, he used to walk at the high net? They only found out those, they had two wives and they were fighting. Political platform, this question keep happening to us. We said it and we say it here again is that we have plans and we are planning to create a coalition. At the minimum, we just be, rest assured that we are safe, that we will come out with a political party that, whose banner will fly to run for office. What we are happy about is that most Nigerians are looking at a candidate this time around. We are not planning to join the APC or the GDP or the ADC or the SDP or any of those forces. We are not planning, we want to bring a fresh political platform upon which we can run and create. Good things will be to Nigeria. It's not difficult, you know? I find it very interesting that when you go to Nigeria and you talk to Nigerian leaders and you challenge them. They'll tell you, oh, you know, America has had democracy for twenty years, it's come down, it's been twenty years. But they never have a problem with driving cars that Americans don't drive. Americans have had democracy for twenty years, they are senators are not driving Bentley. Well, they can't afford it. Even if an American senator is driving a Bentley to work, it will be an uproar. Some of them kaput to work, right? Some of them, they share apartments in Washington DC. There are some, uh, US lawmakers who stay, who sleep in their offices because they cannot afford to rent houses. So when I hear this all the time, we know how to, we know good things. But we have never had people who are interested in bringing good things to Nigeria. Instead, they take good, the only few good things out of Nigeria. All the money we have, they will take it out and go and buy jets and bring it. I watched a video and I said to myself, Nigerian leaders or rich people, they must, they must be idiots. A guy, and this is something I saw on Facebook, I think he happened somewhere in VR. A guy went and bought Lamborghini and forgot the road to drive it. In front of his house, the day, the first time he was trying to drive the car out, all the security men had to bring pants. It was people, people, this wasn't actually doing it, it was another guy in VR. And I must say that I have reached what was being the dumbest people in the world. I mean, when you want to buy a Lamborghini, you should know how close to the ground it is. The first thing you should do is construct your driveway to enable you to drive it. If you are not dumb, you might buy a Lamborghini, you bring it and then you are driving it out. Suddenly you realize that you don't have the driveway to take it out. So good things will come when we have good leaders. Simple. Uh, register to vote, mobilization of vote. We have plans and we've been doing it. It's part of this campaign. And I mentioned it earlier, that you should attach your next remittance to Nigeria. The condition should be go and get your PVC. And those of you who can go to Nigeria, go and also register. Take your next vacation in Nigeria around February. It's good for you because London will be cold anyways. Stay out of the cold weather. And go vote. Go get your PVC and go vote. It's an investment we must all make. I think I heard that there are about two million Nigerians in the UK, yes. A lot of them are doctors, accountants, lawyers, you know, uh, software engineers. They're just powering the society and making this place happy. I mean, live Nigeria, I know. We are going to have an airline that will take all of you back.
Take it!
Take it!
Take it!
The Airways has treated us for too long. We need our own airways so that as soon as the airline is setting off, you are cooking on air and eating amala. So that's, that's, that's the last question I've done ten now. Can you believe that for the entire three years that President Bouhari has been in power, he hasn't answered?
Take it!
Take it!
I'm gonna pause just very briefly, uh, just to take comments, not, not questions. Just please, please, hold on, just comment, hold on, hold on, hold on, take it. Just comment, now, now.
Sorry, sorry. Hold on, hold on. Please, please take, take numbers. What's your number? You know what's going to happen, yes? Hello, hello. Hello ladies and gentlemen. Just hold on, please, hold on, hold on. I think something went wrong. Numbers have been passed out all throughout the hall and we can't take, we can't take those numbers, we can't take the questions from those numbers, okay? But what we're going to do, I want to know what numbers we currently have. So he's taking those numbers and I will be advised shortly, just hold on, please. I want to ask this question. Yeah, from Austin Anake, founder June12 Coast or something.com. Your background is mainly on anti-corruption. Will you pro past regimes when you come to power in 2009? If yes, how many past regimes? EFCC has just spent... Take it! Take it! Okay, I'll just repeat this one first. Okay. Your background is mainly on anti-corruption. Will you pro past regimes and if so, how many of them? Yes. Okay, that's right. EFCC has just spent 24 billion naira to complete their new office building. Do you think this is value for money? If they have a nice prison in there. Okay, thank you very much. What are you going to do about ethnicity and sense of belonging among Nigerians? Moses Oye Bola? We don't actually have an ethnic problem as much as people think they do. People cling to ethnicity because the larger Nigerian umbrella is not protecting them. And when people can't cling to values that are central to their existence, they hold on to what values them. And ethnic groups have come to value their future more because our central umbrella, which is the federal government, is not protecting anybody. It's the way we want to together. As soon as the umbrella is working again and nobody is beaten by the rain, people will go back to the central umbrella and live together peacefully ever. But it cannot be forced, it cannot be done with propaganda, it has to be done with justice. Carol Sika, what is your stance on the Ekoas currency? Are you for or against it? I will support anything that cannot uplift the African economy, yes. We're going to take four, four questions here now. Europeans, let me just say, Europeans stole the idea of the European Union from Africans in the 60s. Look at what it is doing for them now. There's no reason we cannot unite Africa behind one currency, but we also need integration. There's no reason why it should take you four hours to cross from Benin to Lagos, Benin Republic to Nigeria. We just have to open our borders for trade and for integration and development. And if a currency does it, so be it. Okay, thank you. Number seven, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. My question is triple bar one. The first one is, what are your red lines when you start talking of these alliances? What are the things you cannot compromise on when choosing your bedmates, in quotes, in this alliance? Can you give a three-prong step on how we intend taking this country back? It's take it back, we are in the theoretical part now, you're conversing everywhere, very, very good. I follow you closely. Now, can we have a bit more detail? Can we itemize, can we itemize these red lines? So that when we are selling you, we believe in you, but we need to sell you too. When we are selling you, we know what we are telling people. You would not compromise on this. This is what he's going to do. I think we need to know some of these things even before this partnership or alliances start coming up. Thank you very much. Please, the 2011 and 2015 general elections, we have to agree with the fact that it divided Nigeria along ethnic and religious lines perfectly. The bile that these elections generated, I think especially these two, is actually clear. So how are you going to integrate Nigeria first? Because these good things you have stated, they are good. But if we begin to, if we have different views in terms of especially religion and tribe, I don't think it will be easy because people who have different views have anything you bring in, people will look at it from different reasons. So how are you going to integrate people so that they will have one particular view about things? Thank you.
Good evening, thank you so much for doing this and we're all behind you. My questions are, you mentioned solar, solar energy and I think that's really great. Have you considered also solar power in individual homes? So that way businesses can come, set up solar factories, the chain, the employment chain is going to be huge. You're going to need maintenance, transport, delivery, repairs, all kinds of things. So that's going to explode. That would mean that Nigeria can literally be powered within the next four years. And also finally, blockchain technology, how are you going to use that to eliminate corruption? Because of blockchain, we know that it's quite, it's quite tight security wise. Thank you.
Number, number 10, right?
Mr. Sowei, I was saying, I actually followed you because I noticed that you are going about your company, but... Hello? This is not a disco or entertaining questions or we want to ask questions, please just give us the time to ask the questions, please. My name is Odian Harari. First of all, you did say that you're going to try to increase the minimum wage to 100,000. And you know for a fact that we've got two systems that works in Nigeria, the federal and the states. And you understand that some of these states may not be able to afford the 100,000 naira. So what are your plans in ensuring that all states comply with this?
Directing.
100,000 minimum wage and what living wage? And what are your plans in ensuring that every person who have worked for the Nigerian system will become, at some point in time, becomes pensioners? How are you ensuring that these pensioners have every cost to be grateful for the fact that they actually saved Nigeria very well? Thank you.
Thank you, I think I should...
Let's take that for now, please.
I answer this. Thank you very much for these great questions and I want to go through them very quickly. Again, I want to start because pensioners are very, very key to my life. My dad died 10 years ago and he was a teacher for 35 years. Even though I had been in America at that point for four years, it was his pension that kept our family going until I was able to find my feet in the US. My father had 20 kids, we had 16 left. Yeah, don't ask me if I know what their names. But I felt very bad that even though my dad was sick before he died, he had to queue up for days just to get registered as a pensioner. And that's something technology could have done. It should have just sent a text to a number and it will verify and get somebody back to him to register him as a pensioner. And we would not allow our pensioners to ever, ever queue up anywhere again to get paid. Technology should be able to pay the money into their accounts directly. It needs to just be getting a lax. And the way to do it is to stop the people who are stealing their pension money. You heard how much was stolen by just a few people from pensioners. So that is something that is very, very key for me, must be done. That pensioners are our priority in terms of getting paid on time and that we do due diligence in ensuring that we verify them very quickly. There's no going back in that. Minimum wage, the states are already falling over themselves to say they can pay. If you read a few days ago, Gandhi said they can pay 66,000. It's not the job of the federal government to pay for state's minimum wage. But the federal government can set for itself a minimum wage for its workers. In the UK, it is not uniform payment of salaries for people who are working in counties and working at the federal government. There's always disparity. But the pressure will be put on the state government because even though these state governors are not paying workers even the minimum wage they have now, they never, ever miss their security votes by month. And some of them are as much as 2 billion naira. The security vote of a state governor is almost equivalent in some cases, is almost the same amount as a wage bill. But they will take that first for the deducted as source. And what are they doing? Nothing. Even under Buhari, he gave them Paris Club loans, they stole it. So we will have a robust anti-corruption fight that have no respect for state governors. And that is why I will also push for Nigeria to revoke this executive privilege it gets. Immunity, you know, which fellow used to call you by immunity, somebody you cannot catch. You know, you have to remove that immunity. You have to remove that privilege. And I think we should extend it even to the president. Yes, so that all of us will be equal before the law. If there's no immunity for the president, the president will also not be acting with impunity. Yes. So I propose it. I have, I kept saying it and I'll put in it. Solar energy, and that's a good question. We have it as part of our plans. Not only would individuals be allowed to have solar powered roofs wherever they want, you would want them to be able to sell to the national grid. So that will incentivize you if you want to put a little bit. It will become a business to build a solar panel in your house. And instead of investing a little bit, you invest a little more so that you can sell to the grid in your area, who have regional grids. What is killing Nigeria power sector is that even if you have power, you still have to sell to Abuja first. And Abuja decides where to shed your power to when it lights. But if you have regional grids, people can just power, there'll be competition. It will just be like where we have our telecommunications system now, you know, they are competing. So some people will give you data more than the other, some people ask you to have free calls at night. If it was only one telecom company we have, we wouldn't be able to have that. By the way, I want to increase the number of telecom companies in Nigeria. Ghana with 45 million people are there about, I don't know what the population was, lower than ours. They have up to nine. Nigeria only has, we are already starting to have a political telecommunications industry. We should be able to have as many as we want. And in some places, you don't have to have a national telecommunications company, you can just have for an area. It's communication, it's not by force that everybody must communicate with everybody nationally. So we are going to increase that dramatic and we will make money from it because we sell the license. The money comes into the treasury and we use it. But there will be regulation because now they are killing Nigerians. The telecommunications companies are robbing Nigerians. It costs free less money to own a line in America where the minimum wage is about 13 dollars per hour than it is in Nigeria. If I pay 50 dollars in the US, everything is almost unlimited. In Nigeria, 50 dollars cannot last you a week. That's why your family people are still flashing you tomorrow. That's the golden guard, can't afford to call you. Divided Nigeria in 2011 and 2015, the solution is here. I think Nigerians are smarter now. We are no longer voting along ethnic lines. We have a chance to show the video we shot in 23 days of traveling in Nigeria. It was the same way we received warm reception in Kabana that we had warm reception in Oweri. You know why? The people of Oweri or Imo State, they had a worst Buhari managing Imo State. Rochas Rochas. So they have realized that in voting for your person, you are not guaranteed good governor. Oweri is the worst city I've ever been to in recent time in Nigeria. Rochas should be sent to the international criminal court for crimes against humanity with what he did to Imo State. It took us longer to travel from the airport in Oweri to the venue of a town meeting. And I said this openly, by the way, there. Then it took us to travel from Lagos to Oweri. It's faster to go from Lagos to Oweri by air than to get from the airport in Oweri to the center of... The place is in shambles. And Rochas has awarded contracts to his family. He has built these statues for corrupt people around the world. And he had the temerity to nominate his sister as a commissioner of happiness. And the people of Imo are the happiest people because of governors. Yes, the son-in-law is going for governor of Oweri, I mean of Imo. But I said to myself, it was hate the son-in-law because they will show him pepper in last state. He will not have five votes. I don't even think that they will be there by, by election because people are angry in that state. The reason I mention Oweri is just because this whole turn-by-turn ethnic politics we have been, has not helped us. And I think the way to fix it is not to ask my ethnicity or my religion, right? Just vote for a guy who is competent and your backyard will be in good shape. She wanted us to detail, take it back. And I'll take that question with red lines. I think we are operating in a way that there's nobody who is in doubt as to how we want to take Nigeria back. That's right. Nobody. They, they've seen the organizing that is going on. And by the way, this is the most natural movement I have ever led. I've been a student leader before, for those of you, we had to go everywhere to mobilize students. The only time you don't need to mobilize students is when you want to fight against, you want to postpone the date of exam. That one they will mobilize themselves. But this one is a movement in which people are contributing to us to go ahead and take Nigeria back. So we are doing it by way of enabling and empowering ourselves financially, conscientizing and educating people about it. And tall and final, ultimate, final position is that we are going to vote out the old people and bring in fresh ideas. Great leadership in the country that will turn Nigeria around on the path of progress, peace and prosperity. People say that maybe we are making too many promises. We are not promising what we cannot do. Because we are not even comparing Nigeria with the US or UK. Compare Nigeria with Ghana. If they run Nigeria the way, if they run Nigeria the way they run Ghana, half of you would have left UK. And be back home. Ghana is so organized. When they had just a little electricity problem, they punished the president by voting him out. Even though he fixed the electricity problem in Ghana. Ghana is having an electricity problem that is too much electricity. That's their fault right now. That's the problem Ghana has. Everywhere you talk to them in Nakra, you can't see them, they can't take light. They even have a nickname for it when they took light. Don't do so. It became a national embarrassment. Nigeria, it will be a national embarrassment if there's light more than five hours in any neighborhood. They said it's improved, but it only improves during the rainy season, not throughout the period. And Fashola will tell you that they have 7,000 megawatts of electricity. But he will also fail to tell you that they can only transmit 3,000. What do you do with the rest? Keep it in a wallet? I mean, it doesn't make sense without confusion. Red lines and alliances, yes, we will not enter alliances. We've mentioned in the red lines that PDP and APC. We will not go into those kind of, or ADC. Any of the parties that have been known to engage in stealing it, we will not be part of their alliance. We welcome, because we've been getting a lot of inquiries from young people in PDP and APC. We will accept them after we check on their backgrounds. Because don't let me, don't let me be the wrong assumption. This one that we're saying we want to use youth to handle Nigeria, no, there's a lot of bad youths. Yes, so. You will know it, for these states. That is a paragon of irresponsible youth leadership in Nigeria. So let's be careful what we ask for. There's a reason why I don't preach the youth youth thing too much. We are talking about responsibility. But the age at which I am now is the age that Obama... But the age at which I am now was the age that Obama became the US president. I think he was even younger than me. When Bouharé came the first time, he was forty-one. So when they look at me and say I'm inconsequential, you know, I just say, "Father, forgive them."
For the young.
Take it! Take it! He knows he's been standing for like two hours now. He just wants to have a quick break, um, just two minutes. And he will step in, step in back in. Just two minutes, please, two minutes. Don't leave the hall. Let's clap for him, please. And, um, while he's, while he's, while he's having the break, we'll be watching the video he mentioned. Just hold on, please. We'll be watching the video he mentioned, the, uh, twenty-three days in Nigeria. Just, just very briefly, he will step in back in. Please, please don't go away, please. We still have some questions to answer, please. Please, please, sit down. Yeah, the video is about to play now. He's not leaving. Or he's not leaving, please. He just wants to have a quick toilet break and then we'll back. Two minutes, please, yeah, please. While he's out, let's just listen to, what's his name?
Restroom is coming back in a, in a, in a minute. Please, he has not... Yeah, he's not left, so stay tuned.
Once again, uh, we have a, I hope to raise the building, one of the youngest, youngest. Also, uh, powerful, yes, we're going to take it back. The most important time in our lifetime is today. Whether we like it or not, fifty-seven years of independence, nothing to show for it. We must take back the country because there's a lot of people that wants to bring back the Oki State. That doesn't have the right medical treatment. There's ten million Nigerian youth, ten million children. As we speak today, the twelfth of May, twenty-eighteen, that are not in school. We gotta take it back and you are the fighter of the movement.
Yes, we're doing that already.
Yeah, your boy, your boy, Empris in the building. This is dedicated to... Yes, sir. Two thousand nineteen. Oh, no, Empris the building. Let's go. Thank you, everyone. Listen. Bless you. The radio, the module will be ashed clean. Yeah, let's go. Bless you.
Take it! Take it! Take it! Take it!
Back to business.
Let's settle down, please. We can do it.
Let's switch this. Uh, please, I know that we've had a long day. But I want to introduce to you one of my political mentors at the University of Lagos. His name is Dear Wutwashi. Yes. He is, uh, he was, uh, one of the people who, when we arrived at the University of Lagos, I was one of the best speakers. And he was actually the speaker of the student union. But luckily for him, he has not aged. So I just wanted to give you a two minutes of talk about, just two minutes, about our business at the University of Lagos and why we will rescue Nigeria in twenty-five. I don't speak that sound. Great Nigerians.
Great!
Greatest Nigerians.
Great!
Greatest of the greatest of the greatest Nigerians.
Great!
Um, uh, thank you for the opportunity given to me to stand before you today. Uh, I will start by saying, Shure, uh, if I will use the words of William Shakespeare. He said, "He is a man with a genuine honesty and common good to all. His life is gentle and the elements so mix in him that nature itself to rise up and say to all the world that he is a man."
Come on!
Now, uh, if you will permit me to say, uh, Frans Tannen said, "History has no place for those men who possess the exceptional privilege of being able to speak the words of truth to their oppressors, but have taken refuge in the attitude of passivity, mute indifference and sometimes of cold complicity."
Come on!
Now, ladies and gentlemen, I am introducing to you today, I am endorsing this gentleman.
Conscious ambition.
Yeah, he's, uh, talking about conscience. You see, a scholar said, "The struggle between the consciousness power and the powerless conscience is that the former matchbox and the later one fan."
Come on!
Uh, when I was at the University of Lagos, they accused us of three things. I'm surprised that in this twentieth century, uh, we are, the twenty-fourth century, they are still talking about the same thing. Uh, when we go out, we were strugglers. He is a fighter. He is a warrior. Uh, I do not have words to qualify him strongly. He took the struggle beyond the walls of the University of Lagos and he continue to fight until today. I stand beside you.
Take it! Take it!
We are going to be accused of so many things. And, uh, I, I tell you, uh, uh, Dr. Namby Azikwe once said, he said, "I will not listen to the barbaric confessions of political buffoon."
That's right!
"The machiavellian machinations of notorious character assassins." "The brazen hatred of unrepentant, fast-buckling war mongers." "He said that they continue the pastime of exhausting their lack of no training and ability for cheap publicity. Your head is bloody that they are not bow." "If I will finally conclude, I will speak like Jackson Ebo, who said, "Our sufferers of Ghana catascoping to euphoria in their elusive world of psychedelic fantasy. Induced by acute frustration and bad blood, our accusers now six on us in the misguided politics of schism, violence, aggression, blackmail, cannony, revisionism and dialectical reductionism. Besides, they buy the collective and legitimate legacy of the instrumentalities of our collective resistance, which has crossed their crowded path."
Take it! Take it! Take it! London! London! Take it! Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. When you see a speaker, was a speaker, always a speaker. Yeah, thank you very much. We are back on speaker now. Um, uh, just, uh, so we, I told you, I, I told you this guy is one of the greatest speakers of all time at the University of Lagos.
Yeah.
And then imagine how a country where he is from ends up with the Muhammad Bouharé as president.
Yes, yes, uh, thank you, please. Um, some, some of you have asked me, um, we still have questions from the public. We have questions coming online. But, um, what we want to do, if you guys will be cooperative, let's just take a few more from the hall and then we can close for the day. Is that okay?
Yes!
We need to make sure he, he gets some number ten. So first of all, I want to know if you have a number already given to you. Now, let's be, let's be cooperative here. Some of the questions you have already, he has already answered them. Some you know he will answer later on. If you already have a number and you still want to ask your question, let me see your hand. You think your question is... But we can only take just, just four, just four, four questions.
Number ten. Ten. Eleven. Ten. Number ten.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bukala Aziz and, um, my, my concern is about, uh, investors coming into our country. They come, right, they create a job for the best, the juicy part of the job are for export trade. They bring them from their country who actually are apprentices in their, in their own country and come into Nigeria as export trade. And our graduates are just going for the low job, pay almost nothing or like, uh, uh, a lesser person to these people they bring in. Please, what are we going to do to see to it, to it, that that change? That every Nigerian has a value in their own country and outside of our borders? This is very important. That's my interest.
Yeah, good afternoon. Uh, I need to stop. I've come from Cambridge to see you in person. I'm here representing NGOs, um, that are of Nigerian background. I've been in Cambridge thirty-five years. I run the, an NGO myself called Scott Foundation to empower disabled women. And we are ahead of you because I already give a hundred thousand naira every month to empower women who are disabled to start a business or go to school. So my question is for you. I'm currently working with the Lagos汇行 and for Kuku Foundation of Lagos and any other foundation that wish to join hands and join the dots. So my question is to you is, how many more women? Because we've put a few Nigerians in the House of Parliament. So how many more women are you going to work with to promote to the position of power? And what is your mandate for the disabled? I guess somebody has already asked you that question. Thank you.
Two. Two.
Hi, sorry, I'm sorry. Um, my, my question was more of a personal one than actual political. Um, when it comes to political campaigns, we tend to, of course, lift people up and that's a very, very good thing. And we tend to create idols of them. What I want to ask of you was, if you could perhaps really, really know a little bit more about yourself, by telling us what you consider to be your flaws and vulnerabilities. So if you could just tell us what you really think your flaws and weaknesses are as a leader and indeed as a, as a person, it would be good to know.
Hello. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to ask that one question. And this is my only question. What are your plans today with the rude attitude of some of our colleagues in Nigeria today? What are your, what are you planning to do so that we can control our action, behave better instead of being beholden? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Carl, you can see. Um... My name is Carl, you can see. Um, I just spoke with the previous pressman. Uh, chapter two, section eighteen, chapter five, on state, the people of Nigeria. Which it does, the states shall abolish all the corrupt practices and the abuse of power. How do we intend to go without this? I'm very, very, very embarrassed.
Thank you. Uh, let me just be precise. Bukala sees, uh, Nigeria has got laws that prescribe how long or how many export trades, so to speak, that we brought into the country and in which areas. And the law actually says that after every two years, an export trader has come to Nigeria must leave. But we do not have enforcement in the country because our enforcers are corrupt and compromised. There is no reason why oil companies should be bringing people from Philippines to come and do well in Nigeria. It's because of the corruption in our immigration system. And we will fight that and enforce the laws and ensure Nigerians are the first to get jobs that they are qualified for. It is the way it is done everywhere else. You cannot bring in an export trade into America if, as long as there's an American that can do the job. So, and I believe that if we cannot find Nigerians who can do this job inside Nigeria, we can advertise it to outside Nigerians before we start looking for the export trades who are brought out, uh, to come and take the jobs. And when the export trade comes, they also take away a lot of money. So there's capital flights that goes with. So there's capital flights that goes with this abuse of expatriates quota. We'll fix that. You mentioned disabled answer that man and I accept that you are doing a good job. Thank you so much for supporting those disabled women. But our policy towards disabled people has to go beyond charity. It has to become a law, it's a responsibility we must undertake. And when we come along, we'd like to talk to you. We'd like to talk to you to see how best you can advise us to... This is why we need you. Those of you already have experience. We will... Women, we have planned to actually have a 50-50 cabinet. Eventually, eventually, if the people that are capable to do the job are 100% women, we hire them. I was making a joke in Benin when I went there and the young people was like, when I said 50, they were cringing. And I challenge, some of you drove your girlfriend's car to this place. Your girlfriend bought you phone. That time she's not weak. But when it is time to share power, suddenly women should belong to the order room. As a flawless man, but I'm not flawless. Perhaps my flaw is that I am too rigid. That's probably, I'm very rigid when it comes to things that I'm principled about. If you point a gun at me, I don't flinch. Yes, so when I was doing Sahara Report, everybody in Scotland, they say you can't fight powerful people in Nigeria. It's been 12 years and I fought pretty much every powerful person there is in Nigeria. Yes. And my rigidity has put me in a lot of trouble as you can imagine. You know, so I was expelled twice for the University of Lagos. When we were expelled, the students, some students gathered together and they said they want to go and beg the ONU for help to help them beg the university's chancellor, vice chancellor, Professor Nuru Dina Alaw. I refused to join them. I said, "It's the VC that should come and beg me for expelling me, for doing what is right." The democracy we fought for, the vice chancellor is one of the people enjoying it today, my former vice chancellor. Why should I beg him? The judge, who was handling a case when we took the university to court, Justice Abiyonu Keshetin, late. He also asked us to follow him to go to the mosque and beg the VC. He said to us, "You can't win against the authority in my courts." Luckily enough, he's late now, so we are winning in open courts. Just, that's my flaw. Last year, I took Sahara Reporters to Nigeria. Sahara King went and obtained a court judgment, right? And froze all my money, it's still frozen as you speak. About 270,000 dollars I was giving my foundation, 6,000 dollars of my personal money. Somebody who is a higher up there said he would take me to go and beg him. I said to him, "It's the one who will beg and pay me back all the money." And it's going to happen. He's going to end up in jail for stealing depositors' money as societal geniuses. It's going to happen in a lifetime. So I will give you several of those things. But I don't have personal cause, because I do, but I'm not a thief. And I'm not going to steal Nigeria's money. I will be one of the first people who will declare my assets before the election. I didn't tell you now at the one, but let's answer other questions. Rude attributes of Nigeria, sometimes it seems we claim rude attributes are expression of their fundamental rights. If you are looking for, if you are looking for rude people, you know, they are here in the UK. Those soccer fans, they are very rude. And they still, the society can accommodate them. We should be able to accommodate our own rude people. I think sometimes it goes to excitement, you know. But I will admit to something, Nigerians are loud. I love it. It's the attributes of happy people, you know. The constitution, and Nigeria constitution is not our constitution. It was posed on us by the military. They smuggle a fraudulent word there that says "we" the people. There was no body there. They just sat down and a few people wrote the constitution. And we must address that after we rescue our country and reclaim it from these people. It was addressed having a constitution that addressed our needs that is representative of our lifestyles. Our constitution, for example, did not have a message internet, very much. But we need a constitution that is digital in nature. We also have to make our constitution become very digital document, a live document. But we do that as part of the rebuilding of Nigeria, the reforming of Nigeria. When we win next year, we'll have eight years to do that. Because if we win that first time, not if we win that first time, we win a second time again. And within eight years, we will do something that, like I keep telling people, when we're done, this my hair will be gone. But people will be going to Barben Salo and say, "Cut my hair like Shorres hair." It's called showtime. So I think we have a few more questions, if you guys don't mind. I think this is the last set of questions, right?
16, sorry, 16. 16.
Thank you very much. My name is Olubodie Fali. I'm sitting from Dublin this morning and I'm going to fly back to Stanford any time from that. My question is not to Shorre because I know if you can't make it right, you can't get it right. So my question is to myself, to you, to every one of us, what are we doing about the funding? This is London. London is very, very giving, very charitable. We know that for London. If they want to raise money, there is... 2 million dollars can be raised in East London, Elah. We can't be struggling with just 40,000 dollars with just 460 people. Look, that money is just in percentage, it's just, let's be, just 2.1%. We can't do that. We are over, I've done my calculation, we are almost 300 here. If each person makes his own contribution, we are flying. So I'm talking to Nigerians all over the world today, right now. I've done it and I'm going to do it again. It's all easy to contribute into that fund. It's not conversational. Don't say that they're going to steal my credit card. No, it's very easy. This take back movement, it's my... That's why I pay my time. I've never paid time to Troy before. I'm not a time waster, but you have to say the truth to ourselves. We have to be sincere. It's very, very important. Nobody is going to solve my problem when you say, "Well, hey, you have to go and do it again." Nobody, British will not solve our problem, Americans will not solve our problem. It is me and you that will solve our problem. What they don't do on social media, making comments, making noise without participation. Questions come in front of my task. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, next person, thank you. Please, tell this a person please.
We're the greatest Nigerian people, we're the greatest Nigerian people. My name is Olubodie Fali. I'm the president of Ameroski University Student Union. Why I'm here today because I'm passionate about what you do. I love brave people, I love proactive people. But me, Shorre, I'm just concerned about something. You know, in Nigeria, we have ineptitude leaders that have employed indolent staffs. Now they call themselves Kabas, they're ruining their fears of Nigeria, who we have professionals in Nigeria. Now, if you're going to do a coalition with people that you're going to be collaborative with to form this government, how do you intend to pick the big two that are going to be walking your cabinet? Because these people will be PBS check. If you know PBS check, I'm afraid, how do you intend to go about it? Thank you.
Good evening everybody. My name is Avolara Ayadiba Batunde. My question for you, sir, Mr. Shorre, is we know how they operate in Nigeria. Before I go on, I have to say I've been coming down for a group called Nigerian Voice for Democracy. And what we are fighting for is, and what we do is to sensitize our people in Nigeria. We're talking about this issue of money back politics, you know, like him. And what are you going to do? Because with the research, our people in Nigeria, it's not all of us here that are going to vote for you. It's not the people on the majority of people on the internet, it's going to be the grassroots people, the local people that will vote and we have to face that reality. The thing is, these people are used to people giving them 1,000 naira or 10,000 naira to vote. They call it cook, vote her cook. So, and the problem is there. How are you going to deal with this, sir? Because these people are hungry. These are the things they say to me, they ask me. So how will you deal with this? And the second one is, which is the final one is...
Please, can you give me two one?
We are organizing a mega debate for the first sentence. So will you be part of it, sir? Will you be, I mean, are you going to, will you oblige us, as in, do we be, we take part in our debate? Thank you so much.
If Buhari shows up at a debate, I'm sure.
Then that's the last, is that the last one now?
Yes.
The last one, okay.
You're excellent, sir, because I know you're going to be a president. The only one thing I have against you, which is really little is question is, Dino is my, is for my area. And you made a publication about Dino. Dinos. All right, you made a publication about Dino that, these are the allegations that you put about, you know, you put on Sahara Report that, like Dino for example, that he doesn't even have a certificate. How come most of all, you know, your allegations does not turn out to be, you know, to be true? Thank you. Yeah. So, people have been asking question, but for me, I have a solution. Now. Yes, a solution. For instance, our foreign government will be recruiting, I heard that foreign government will be recruiting 6,000 police officers. But for me, if I'm the president, I'll go to the local community in Taraba, Benue, Ariguti, indigenous to protect themselves. That is one. I'll recruit them to protect themselves and I think that is the best way to solve problem of heads men in Benue, Taraba. Secondly, how can we solve graduate unemployment? For me, I've told people that the day I assume the office of the president of Nigeria, I was crap PTDF scholarship because it's a fraud. PTDF scholarship is a fraud. Now, how can you train somebody with over maybe 40 million BSc, masters? And at the end of the day, the person returns back to Nigeria to take foreign government job, it's a fraud. What happens to that woman that sells a caravan roadside? Again, for me, if I assume the office of the president or if I can advise you, pay Kuku members 100,000 for 24 months. Also, the banks, if you pay them 100,000 for 24 months, in two, in two years, you can, they can have that money and for the self-employed graduate. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been, I have been told that our time in the hall is over. So I'm going to be very quick and I will answer the most exciting question, which is Dino, my friend. You asked that why don't the story come out to be true? I will explain very briefly to you. Dino claimed that he has a degree from geography at ABU. He also claimed that he has a degree from Harvard and he has a degree from the London School of Economics, LSC. So we called LSC and they said he doesn't have a degree from here. He attended a conference for two days. We called Harvard and they said he doesn't have a degree from Harvard. He attended a seminar for four days. And Dino said it openly on TV in Nigeria that he has degrees from seven universities. Said I have five, he said he has five masters degrees. Even the degree he claimed, the masters degree he claimed to have from Joss, he has not completed it at that time. But this is what we did and that's where we're different, is that I studied geography and planning as well, if you don't know. You have to go a compulsory course, which is free to street. Dino did not do it. We brought out his certificates, I mean his results and sacrificed the courses he failed. Of course, he went and gave the vice chancellor there, I said 5 million naira. My woman will produce a certificate from here. Today, he has not put his certificate in the open because it was recently signed. So when you are asking question from someone, you should not do, don't be too sure of yourself because I'm an investigative reporter. And now I'm going to change my job next year. So that's my new job. So coalition and influence on us, that is where red line is coming. We are not joining a coalition that is going to bring to us a cabinet member who is a thief. No. We are, there are things that are non-negotiable when it comes to what we do, when we come to office. By the way, we would not take six months to appoint ministers. It should happen between the first week in office. When the president of Nigeria today was waiting for five and a half months, according to Professor Nuthan, we thought he was going to bring in really serious people. And when he unveiled his cabinet, I said to myself, this guy should have released in name of the cabinet ministers the same day he was sworn in. He wasn't wanted to have waited for six months for those characters. So we will not accept ineptitude. As I usually say, the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, any president for that matter, is the chief human resources officer of the country. And the moment you cannot hire bright, brilliant and trustworthy people, you have failed your first assignment as a leader of any country. There is no president in the world that can do the job of the entire cabinet. You are supposed to be the chief motivator. And the better the people you hire, the less stress you have to go through, the less time you spend in hospital. You know, treatings. Money politics, it is true that money is a problem. But the person that spent the most money in 2015 lost the election. The person that was spending the most money in 2019 will lose the election. You already know that. That's all I can tell you because we don't have time. And the last brother spoke about solutions. I love solutions, right? What I propose is that after this town hall meeting, we should also have a solution summit, one of these days. And I will invite you as one of the speakers. Once again, people, it has been great. I don't want to ask who will vote for me in this room. Is there anybody in this room who plans to vote for President Buhari?